All right, so we're evolving to St. Mary's. Uh, we need to do the real call. It was our Alderman Hells.
Rosen.
Alderman Dino.
Yeah.
Here. Alderman Bergman Absen. Alderman Rosenway.
Yeah.
Alright, did we have anything on the agenda? You want to look through it? I don't have a motion to the session. Uh, make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made seconded by Alderman Rosenway, on favor.
Aye.
And I close. Alright, pass. They have her motion to the consent agenda. Uh, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll step in there.
Motion made seconded by Alderman Hells. Consent agenda passed. And that includes the previous. Public forum is Carl Schultz here. Carl Schultz, can you be outside? You want to check and make sure he's not outside? Okay. Okay, absent. We have Mr. Kiefer.
Over here.
Alright. Yeah, Mr. Kiefer, the floor is yours to address the board. Uh, anytime they may ask or something, so we can ask. We just go through this.
Yeah, we're just here to try to get, see if we can get our water turned on up at nine twenty-seven or nine thirty.
Oh, that's another issue. Okay, so the technical address on the house is nine twenty-seven six.
Mr. Rollin?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, when I went to St. Jen to the assessor's office, they have it listed as nine thirty-eight. That is the official nine-one-one address. So does that mean that we need to change the house numbers to nine thirty-eight?
Yes, it's by the nine-one-one system, yes. Because that was enacted in two thousand and ten when they changed over. That way they know, even though dispatch has satellite, you know, this bill is not always correct. It's five hundred meters. So I will say yes.
This is my starting with mailbox and house.
Because probably because at one time that was two lots or two larger areas, and then they built another household, and then they combined the needs.
Okay.
From like eighteen hundreds or something, that happens all the time. So, because I mean, I have one from eighteen hundreds connected to mine. But it's separate from my main.
Oh.
And just too much to combine two to hundred both physically miles. They was five, so. Um, is that, what else do you have?
Okay, next thing is, um, we would, we are in the process of re-living the home right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
We are, we have.
We're wanting to get the water turned on there. Uh, but we were told that there was still a bill from the previous tenant person, uh, Roland Pique.
Okay, and so, what do you, what do, real quick, what is the, what is the new house number?
It will be nine thirty-eight.
Nine thirty-eight.
So.
We're not sorry, nine thirty-seven.
Okay, nine thirty-seven.
Is Mr. Pique, is Mr. Pique associated with nine thirty-seven?
Um, yeah, I mean, he is, but they were shooting a lot, so that bolt shows on there.
I just don't want any confusion there.
Yeah, because like years can show too, because you have several lots. That did at the time, like I said. When they renumbered the nine-one-one system, it kind of got messed up. So they renumbered everything, but that is the current nine-one-one.
So do we have Mr. Pique's bill on our minutes here?
Um, that goes back to.
It's actually Ronnie that's taking care of the bill, because it was his dad's bill.
Yeah, because I think that's whenever the brother snuck in and.
Something, yeah.
Did something, and they have a bond out or something for him for his rest, to pay for restitution, a catering, something like that. It was like water usage with it.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly. So, have you been in touch with Ronnie at all?
Yeah, he's, he's been wanting to come to a meeting, so you guys can explain the bill to him or whatever, because he don't, he thinks he's, he thinks he got it all paid.
No, he knew, I talked to Ronnie years ago about that. Because after his dad passed away, and they split the estate through probate, one drink at all, they had a little gift that Ronnie, you know, does the record service, so I mean. So he should remember, but he didn't want to pay for, um, his brother's, his hat, so. But that's, you know, out here or there, they're so responsible through that estate.
Yeah.
Um, I'm trying to think on that, because if you bought it, I remember when you bought it.
Yeah.
Been a long time ago.
Yeah.
So, what's the bill up to, do we have that?
Four three something. Four something.
Okay, I think it's four years, five years, yeah, it's been there.
Ronnie's hard to get response out of.
He's hard to get. He almost had it over there.
Yeah.
To get it.
Yeah.
But, I remember that happened, and they sold it, I remember you bought it, because I was looking at the refurbishes, you know, they just forget it, so. But you bought it. And I was wondering what you were doing with it, I haven't seen it. It's a star over there, but it's used to me, right about home.
It's, takes a long time, I mean, it's, it's pretty much, I can start building now, get the insulation done next.
Uh, did you already get an occupancy, or not occupancy, a destruction permit and all that stuff from the city yet?
Well, she, a previous girl.
Yeah.
Said that we didn't need one for doing any work inside.
Not inside, yeah.
That's what we're working on right now.
Okay, are you planning on expanding or?
No.
Because I know the house was kind of small, so.
We're getting a shed, putting it back on.
So that, so, I don't know if she explained, you'll have to do the side design, we're kind of tight in the area, and they'll just locate it in what the C, those AC utilities and everything like that. Then you bring it from the board, the board crews it, and there you go. So they get permit, they put it in, so, and I think the permit's going to be like ninety days. I believe it's ninety days, but.
Well, the shed's in the making right now, so.
So we'll need that next.
So contact, yeah, so contact the builders, to actually like print, you know, and get everything. And like a map showing where you're going to plant the place, and then dig right, call them obviously, and have them put that in, so we can make sure everything located.
Okay, yeah.
You know, because if you're over a water line or something like that, sewer breaks, we've got to move that building one way or another, and just one of the deals, so, you know.
Yeah, makes sense.
So, and it's really not that much for the permit, so. But, uh, Jess, did you find it, it should be under Rollin?
Well, it's an old system, the total is four nineteen forty-six. I, I have to figure out how to print from this.
Okay. Any, uh, input from the board?
It sounds like, I mean, I wouldn't understand if I'm a proprietor, it's a, a field, I don't know if I'd be happy about it. But it sounds like that's a sizzle matter between you and the prior, and the person who bought it from.
So that has to be paid before we can get the water on.
Oh, the fellow that told you the property or, I suppose the bill, is he still at St. Mary's?
He lives in Chester.
Chester, okay.
Ronnie, he's.
And does he have any business with us in St. Mary's at all?
Uh, not really.
Any other meters or any other houses?
No.
No.
Okay. He has no tangible property here. His family does, but it's beside the point there.
Yeah.
This was a probate thing, when they got finished. I'm trying to see if the meter deposit applies to it, if Rollin paid that meter deposit. If we could apply that meter deposit to the house to balance.
That's reasonable.
I think that'd be reasonable, we just got to see what, if Rollin paid the meter deposit, depending on what it is, we'll find out if there's a meter deposit. And then apply the difference to that, and whatever difference is, I guess you could pay, because typically they're between seventy-five, hundred fifty, three hundred dollars for. If it's a three hundred dollars and you never use it once, then, you know, three hundred off that, you're really not, it's not costing you much, and you, you can probably work something out with that, if you're okay with that. Because he's not, Rollin's not going to be using it.
No.
No.
So that's what I'm saying.
That's fine, yeah.
It's up to you, Mr. Kiefer, I mean, I'm just, I know how it is, so it's, it's not fun, but, uh.
Well, we need water to, you know, I still got the power for the house, and we got grain, and we got this and that.
So you all got a temp or temporary occupancy permit, that lets you use the water and flush and wash your hands and stuff like that.
And we still, we're, we're putting new water line there too, so.
Okay, alright, so you're not quite there, so when you get quite, all the way hooked up and everything, we'll, we'll have this figured out. Do you have a contact number?
Yeah, uh, five seven three, five eight seven, one two zero six. Yeah, the water line they had in there with this, uh, it was rotten, rusty and whatever.
They probably have that stuff, and I'm sorry, what's your actual address?
Eight oh five PCR, eight ten, there you go.
Okay, that's what I thought, I didn't know if you had another move in town, because I know you did a lot of property.
Yeah.
Alright, so, give us this week to figure it out, I'll give you a file, or Jess will, and we'll see what's in the meter. You guys agree, that's only up to you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna leave it up to you guys, I mean, there's a meter deposit for a reason.
I think if many pieces of deposit value is the water turned on, that's why everything should, you know, be rectified.
I would imagine a lot of that's probably interest on the back end.
Yeah.
Because that's out over a good while, so. Um, yeah, and then if the other person doesn't ever pay, or the warrant gets served for the fifth time, and he has money, we'll get that bond amount back. So we're going to apply that back to the water itself. He just, as they put it, so.
Yeah. They're going to do, get you some water.
Is that where you get started? Get that, are you planning on moving there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be in there at the end of the summer.
Okay, alright, cool. Alright, um, is there anything else we can help you with, or?
Anything else?
So when you get the water hooked up, the lines are, come down to just the occupancy, occupancy permit, that way you can still wash hands, use toilets, I mean, and stuff like that.
And do we need a building permit for getting a shed?
Yes.
Yeah.
You'll need that, which are not that much to draw on, is not anything.
Okay.
So, but if you don't have anything else I can address for you, I said I'll try to work with you as best I can. I didn't rule to that, because there was a deposit on that meter, but I don't think he got it, so.
Yeah.
They got the other money from the state, you didn't worry about that part, so. I'll be in touch, though, we'll figure something out one way or another.
Alright, so it's good.
Alright.
Alright.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting, or do what you want to do.
Just stay. Please stay, we mustn't.
Okay. Alright.
We're here.
Ms. Pacanu, you're up next with the floor, and can you state your name to the record, and also where do you reside?
I'm Sandy Pacanu, I'm in eight three Eighth Spruce Street.
You currently live at eight three Eighth Spruce Street?
No, I don't currently.
Where do you currently live?
I currently live at five oh three Oak Hill Road, Jackson Wizard.
What you have the floor, man?
Okay, so, I had an empty house, as you all know, and my sister moved back from Kentucky, and she needed a place to stay. So I allowed her and her boyfriend to move in with her kids. Um, we came down here, I think it was like January twenty-first, is, or first-ish. Um, and I don't remember what her name is, the normal water lady, but.
April?
April. I told April, and she was like, you know, here's a tenant, I was like, no, it's not a tenant agreement, you know, like, she's not renting or anything, like, she's just moving in, she's my sister, and she's like, oh, okay. So she just had her sign, that on her agreement. Um, and in the process of all that, the water was turned on, I think either that, later that day, or the next day. Um, from day one, the sewer system, the grinder area, started spewing out water consistently. Um, they can't frankly come by, he thought it was an electrical issue on our end, um, he had more sewers come out and check the fuse box outside. It was just, one of the two fuses was happening to be, um, out, he changed it, it was just a very simple fix. Still did not actually do anything with the grinder or the sewer system at all. Um, we were told that the grinder's broken, everything has to be replaced. It took about a month, over a month, for them first, you know, him to get the grinder system in, get it all figured out, what the problem was. And then come to find out, there was a problem on our end as well, so we were told about that.
What was that problem?
Um, I guess, so, I'll be honest, so when I moved out of the house, there was nothing wrong, as you can see in my water bills, my water bills were one hundred percent normal, except for a small leak and a running toilet, so my water bill was, oh, a little bit higher than normal, probably around one fifty, one seventy-five a month. Um, but I guess, I don't know if this happened when the tractor was on the land in September, and all the stuff was moved and everything, but the pipe where the water comes up, I guess it's the hose connection, it's like, uh.
Spigot.
A spigot, but like, the well, the well.
Yeah.
The old well, you know what I'm talking about now? I guess down at the very bottom of that, up underneath the ground, there was a leak, so you would not have been able to tell in the yard, there was no evidence of it, whatever. Everything was coming out of the sewer system, so it was completely under everybody's understanding that it was a sewer grinder problem at the end of the day. At no point during this time, up until the grinder was fixed, and everything was dug out, and there was a problem recognized, was anybody informed, me, Haley, or her boyfriend, that water was running through my meter on my end, okay? So for five weeks, five weeks, until this entire problem got solved. Then it was told immediately to me, hey, there's a problem, it's a huge problem, you've got to get this fixed. Hey, there's sewer leaking out, we don't know what's going on, you've got to get all this fixed, you're going to get fined by the EPA for ten thousand dollars, you know, because you've got sewage wa, you know, coming out. Within a week and a half, a giant snowstorm happened, and everything else that week and a half, um, and Frank got it fixed for me. He got everything dug out, he got, well, first my fiance, and tried to dig out the problem and fix it, realized it's too big of a problem, I need Frank, so he got Frank. They got, he got the problem completely fixed, that for about a week and a half. During that week and a half, we informed Haley, our two-week period, we informed Haley and Gino, hey, you want to turn the water off? This is going to cost you a small fortune. They agreed upon themselves that, hey, I, I kind of got to take this, because I got kids in the house, so they're going to kind of take that, you know, a little bit. It was turned off for a few days, and then it was turned back on. That, that's something they've got to kind of deal with, you guys a little bit, I feel, there's been a payment plan, and everything arranged with them for that. But on my end, I'm being told I'm responsible for that six weeks, that I was never informed at any point there was actually, because I was in contact with Frank this entire time. So it wasn't, and Frank was in contact with Gino on an everyday basis, they're neighbors, as you know. So needless to say, there was never a communication, like I said, on our end, that it, there was actually water running through our meter, and we had a major leak. So in the process of this whole thing, for I guess the past three weeks, the breaker on the grinder has been broken, and sewage is just freely leaking in my yard, there, you know, my yard. And I'm talking giant amounts of sewage, because this breaker has not yet to be fixed. So it's like, I get threatened with a ten thousand dollar EPA fine for not getting this, you know, saying, I have to get this fixed immediately, or I'm going to get this huge fine, because someone's going to report me for having sewage in my yard. But, yet, three weeks we've gone by, and there's still sewage in my yard, but this is on the city side of it.
So do you answer, just let me interrupt first, did you answer my question, and what, I asked you what was, you said there was something wrong on your end?
So we found out about it once the grinder was fixed, and, um, the things were dug out, and there was sewage leaking from this pipe, and we found out that that water spigot, that there was a break down here, well, when he went and fixed that break, then it broke underneath the, the, um, driveway. And then he trailed it back and fixed the entire break. So, I mean, that's kind of how it went, but everything was leaking, linking to the sewer and the grinder, and it was all coming up out of the grinder, and I guess he brought the rabbit, or whatever that thing's called, trying finally, it was all assumed it was under the sewer. Basically on your guys' side, up until over a month later. And then it's being told it's on our side, and it was fixed, as soon as Frank could get to it, it was fixed. But, and obviously, had we known about this a month and a half prior, before it got fixed, and I was knowing that it was on my side, it would have been fixed immediately, with no issues. So, it was never about not getting it fixed, or being irresponsible, or anything like that, it was a lack of knowing what the situation was entailed, and communication that maybe it was on my side, but it was never communicated that it was on my side.
Okay, thanks.
Frank, do you have some input on this?
Yeah, and, and Frank Hunter, oh, you know, on record, make sure this is on record, since you've been in contact with allegedly Gino, I want this record to reflect this. So tell me what's going on in the board.
So, when we found out that, that, so, whenever the house was being rented back out, or whatever it is, the, you know, oxy permit, turn around, I didn't know if there was an oxy permit put on it or not. Um, the thing about it is, is, uh, if the water got put into another person's name, the oxy permit should have been, actually, permit should have been formally done on the house. Um, the water got turned on without my knowledge, and the water got turned on at the time of this happening, and stuff, uh, from a previous employee, that I did not know, turned in on at the previous time, so I did not check the meter, uh, to make sure there was no water running through the meter. Um, when it come to find out that the grinder was messed up, that there was no power, I checked the power, there was no power coming in on one leg of the grinder, which is a two fifty, uh, you know, volt, uh, system. We was only getting one twenty on one side of the leg, so the system couldn't run if it needed to. Uh, after we got the power, I told them that the power was, I'm a messed up on the inside of their, uh, box, and not on us, as soon as we got power to it, then I'm a, we checked the power again, and then I'm a, the, um, grinder was showing me a default in the windings of the grinder. Which that could have been a cause of only falling on one leg of the grinder, uh, of power, I'm not saying it was on due diligence of the homeowner. But I'm a, that could have been a problem where it did fry the grinder, not a hundred percent sure on that, they're older grinders. Whenever we found out that the grinder was messed up, we went ahead and ordered a new grinder, and it took a little bit to get the grinder, because it was on back order at the time. And anyways, I'm a, as soon as we got the grinder, we had the, the big snowstorm come in, we couldn't put a tractor out there or anything, because of ice and stuff. As soon as we got that done, we kept pumping it out whenever it would get full. Uh, you know, when we got called about it, or if I checked it out myself, and it's showing it was full, we'd grab a tractor, suck it out. Um, turn around, whenever the weather broke, we put a new grinder in, and I'm a, which is one of the new ones. Anyways, I'm a, after we put the grinder in, uh, we took the tractor out of the yard and everything. That following weekend, I found out that there was water flowing out of the ground, and it was on the same side as our sewer line, so I was determining that it was probably our fourth man leaking, because there was some debris and stuff showing that it could be a sewer, uh, I marked it out, uh, did an emergency locate on it. We was going to dig it up, uh, started dating the ground, uh, and probing to see if I could pinpoint exactly what part of the line it was on in the ground, so we didn't have to rip up so much. Then I'm a, come to find out, uh, I called a DUDOC and, uh, back it up there, to turn around to verify that it was coming out, a, a, a pipe coming from the house, it wasn't actually a sewer backup. Uh, whenever I killed the water from the meter, um, turn around and, uh, the water just stopped. So we thought they had a sanitary sewer line that was, uh, coming off the house, coming around the grinder to an Oseptyt tank, that's what we was assuming it was. Come to find out, it was actually a storm during, a gutter during coming off the house. Um, when I turned the water back on, I had, uh, the residents living there now, I asked them to turn the water off inside the home at the main, to see if it was leaking through a toilet or anything inside the house. That's whenever we found out that it was leaking on the outside of the house from, um, the meter to the house. Um, whenever, uh, we was trying to pinpoint where it was at, we listened to the, um, frost freeze hydrant, um, turn around, I could hear hissing through the, through the metallic of it, um, so that's where we figuring it was at. Um, so we shut the water off, told the resident, hey, I'm a, you know, you're going to have a pretty good bill on this, um, we couldn't verify how much it would be, because I didn't know the usage at the time. And anyways, I'm a, we went ahead and, um, it got dug up, uh, I came back over to fix that problem. Another snowstorm was coming, another snowstorm was coming in, anyways, I'm a, the resident asked me, you know, because they got kids, if I could turn the water on, and I told them that, you know, with this leak, wherever it's still at, you know, I didn't know how big the leak is, how much water was going through it at the time. Um, as soon as, um, the weather broke again, we went ahead and fixed, um, a leak that was underneath the driveway, uh, come to find out, the copper had a hole in it underneath the middle of the driveway, I cut the meter, or the cut the pipe, uh, underneath the driveway, and capped it. Anyways, I turned the meter back on, there was showing no leaks at all, uh, with the grinder, now, we kept on having an issue with the power failure, and knocking out the contactor of the new grinder. Anyways, uh, I called the manufacturer that sold us the grinder, and the circuit board, I was talking to them, we was going through some ropes, trying to get it, uh, reset, um, trying to figure out, uh, what the problem was, I was doing a lot of troubleshooting on it. Uh, checking homes and stuff on the grinder, to make sure we didn't have a bad leak that they called. Uh, so anyways, after that was fixed, uh, we, we found out that it was the contactor, um, so the contactor got changed out, and it's been on since, uh, the past couple days here, since I got it fixed.
Did you see?
I was there, the storm, and it was down.
Huge, a lot of sewage.
Oh, so.
I was there, I did, to be honest with you.
Now we have pictures and video from tonight.
Alright, that's fine. The breaker inside the house, was that operational, or?
So, inside the house itself, there's breakers, but inside the closet, the outside closet, there is a Weston paper fuse box. And then, I mean, they're outdated, um, but the thing about it is, is it must have got fixed by the electrician whenever I called him, because we got full power now. Um, but the breaker is fixed inside, I put a brand-new contactor, or breaker in, uh, the system, and it was not tripped at all, when I went back over there to check.
Yeah, it got fixed immediately.
Thank you, and sir, you, you're the resident.
Yes, sir.
Are you paying rent there?
No.
Okay. Alright.
Like I said, it's just my sister and her boyfriend, she, she had a really bad daddy-daddy issue, and I, she's asked me before, and I wouldn't matter because of him, and now he's completely, I don't know, because I have a picture, and he, I'm just, this is one hope, a hard-working, good man, for especially, I am so proud of her to have met this man. And he is in the house, and he's fixing things up, and he's keeping the yard, and he's doing every single thing he is supposed to, and that is why I let her move in, because it looks like, okay, let's, the whole point is bringing good people to communicate, community, she has little kids, they're good people, they're hard-working, there's no part of the spectrum, I don't know, I think it's just. I figured it would be a good fit at the end. I figured it would be a good fit at the end of the day.
Tonight, like about an hour ago when I drove up there, there's still water coming out of the top.
Yes, I have pictures and I have.
Sewage was still currently, right now, this evening pouring out. There is water coming up out of where the grinder is.
They had the baby gate, the entire area off because of the children. It was moving down to the swing set area and everything.
Was there an electrician involved?
Yes. Electrician involved.
Martin Coles.
Who wasn't shit.
Uh, yes.
Okay, yes. And Frank, are you aware of the current sewage problem?
So I'm aware, and I, so when I went down there this morning, I was aware, I seen the sewage come, it's actually coming out of the vent pipe. The grinder was down because I opened the grinder pit up. Whenever I was checking this again, it was down. I know there was an issue that stuff got dropped down into the vent pipe. Um, don't know if it got unclogged yet or not. Anyways, because that is not my side, or you know, the city's side. Anyways, but the grinder would work. Anyways, the breaker is on, the power's going to the grinder. Anyways, because Dan Hussner and Tony from Flow Systems, I called them about this to make sure what I need to look for and they told me to go ahead and change a few things out on it, which it is bad. So I gotta send that one back to them to get reimbursed with a new one. It was a bad one.
A new grinder.
Your grinder's good.
Well, well, the panel, not the grinder itself.
It's just the panel. Sir, the what?
The panel.
The panel.
Yeah. Anyways, but they called a bad one and they, I mean, anything you buy new sometimes can go bad. But, um, but it was changed out and it's working. I mean, it has not tripped or anything in it. Which it's been a few days since, you know, we actually was running back and forth with Flow Systems trying to figure out if it was an actual circuit board or if it was a breaker issue or if it was a grinder issue. And that's the reason why we was doing a lot of omen and check in and all that, so.
Okay. So it seems like there's several issues. One, the primary one is a huge water bill. And then secondary ones are having someone move in the house before everything was properly cleared.
Well, to be honest.
Second, I think Florida. The third issue is defective electrical supply to the grinder, which may have contributed to the grinder failing, failing. The fourth issue is water continuing to run and in a way that everybody would appreciate it. Uh, you raised an issue about uh, equipment running over the sewer line or something, but your water leak was approximately forty feet away. It was right next to your house, next to the cement, so it was some distance.
Now it's only about ten feet.
I'm speaking, please. I listened, I heard you talk.
I'm aware.
So, uh, so the tractor, uh, which I believe was used, I wasn't there for that, but as I understood it, there's quite some distance from where you had an active water leak, which was your yard meter or yard water supply, which is adjacent to the concrete near your carport. There's a separate issue with hissing that Frank determined near the water line. There's a fifth issue where the water and sewer leak was acknowledged and attempts were made to repair it. And once that was recognized and it was acknowledged that there was a lot of water running through, resulting in expense to you and your sister and her spouse, I don't know if your ancestors relationship is. So, uh, and he indicated, go ahead and leave it run. So that was an acknowledgement that you knew you had a leak and you needed it to continue to run, which I understand because you had six children in the house.
Yes.
So, uh, given the fact that there's water leaking and you've, everybody acknowledged it and you continued to go ahead until the water line could be repaired. There was some delay because of the storms and the equipment supplies. So, uh, it would appear, just on first pass, that you are and will be responsible for excessive water usage for whatever the reason is and that goes with the turf of having a property. The other issues beyond that, given that the number of factors that are involved with this stuff, I would suggest, I guess, given the amount of the bill, that it just be turned over to legal to be determined that way. So it makes things fair.
May, may, may I respond?
Sure.
Um, so occupancy permit laws, when I came up here, there was no discussions of that. There was no, I need to get that because she is family and.
Is it required by law?
I understand that, but I was not informed of that and I would have no idea if no one from the city is actually telling me I even need to get one. When they're, hey, we're signing these papers saying the water gets turned on, correct? Okay, again, the previous employee that is no longer working here did turn the water on. Frank was not informed of these things. So there was a lack of communication between the city and employees during this process. And there was never a check on my water meter to tell me at any point, up until that grinder was fixed, which was six weeks later, that, hey, you have any type of leak on my end whatsoever. So my understanding is, I understand I'm a homeowner. I understand there's problems. I understand you have to come across things. But if at no point the job was done correctly by checking my side of the water meter to let me, the homeowner, know that I even had this issue whatsoever because there is obviously no visible signs in any way, shape or form, how can you say I'm completely one hundred percent on the water bill? I'm responsible if there was a lack of a job done correctly in order for me to be resolved. I understand also the water, the electricity part, but as Frank clearly stated, there is no determination whether that was the issue or whether it was not the issue. It's, he clearly stated, I have absolutely no idea if that could be the cause in any way, shape or form. So again, if for six weeks employees never once checked my water meter to see that in any way, shape or form, this water was being used on my side, how can I truly be held responsible for that three thousand dollars?
Well, what you just said is, I have no idea. And if you have no idea, then you have no idea one way or the other. And common sense, just a second, common sense would dictate, like, if you were leaking water and it's obvious and it's a significant loss, you have to acknowledge that that's.
I'm supposed to take care of it. Right.
And as given, and given all the factors involved, just, I think it'd be simpler instead of us debating back and forth to just have the city attorney and your attorney resolve this.
Yeah.
And then.
I would like to follow up because I'm sitting here, first time I've heard this story. You've been able to articulate a problem that a citizen in our town has.
Thank you.
And you did a very good job.
Thank you.
So here you are, a citizen. Something happens at your property and one, you're not an electrician, you're not a plumber.
I'm not a city worker.
And, you know, you get a property and you want everything to work. That's why we live in cities, by the way, because they have water sewer systems in churches and schools or other things. Reason why you live in towns is because of services. That's one of our services.
Thank you.
My observation is, we failed in not being able to give an occupancy permit to this woman and we didn't do our part by making sure everything was working before we went in. We don't know what's going on either and you don't know what's going on, but.
Everything worked perfectly and I moved out.
Yeah.
Everything.
But the thing is, I'd like to finish.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. Those old hydrants are old. Everything above this plumbing's old. And where your plumbing probably cracked, you know, we know about this, is down at the bottom of that hydrant, you know, the frost free or whatever it is, there's a bolt down there that rusts out and gets rotten and, you know, can break. And we know that because we have those hydrants in a lot of yards and I don't know what was checked first, second or third when you have a leak, but that's one of the places I might wanna go if there was a leak in somebody's yard and go over and say, okay, let's find out where this leak is, you know? This woman just came down and reported, you know, that she has these problems. So the permit would have helped. And, but you were living there and you witnessed what happened and you're trying to tell us what's happened and I believe that what you're telling is, is your true take on it. Um, there was a plan made to fix it and which I'm glad because that's where the city comes in, the services, and we should go down there and try to do what we can do. So having said that, there's two things that I'm really confused about was the call for repair and the answer for repair. When was the call made and when was the repair made? I mean, you made the call to the problem and.
For Mauricio's or for the actual when I was told I had a leak on my side, which one?
Yeah, when you returned.
When I was told that it was an electricity problem, Mauricio's called the next day and they came out within a couple days.
Yeah.
And that was fixed. And then weeks later, when the grinder was fixed, he called me and he let me know every single thing that was going on. And he told me, you know, after everything was done, he would come over and he would fix it as soon as he could, which took about a week and a half because we had that snowstorm.
Right. And what is that, is a real bear to work with?
Correct.
And the only thing, so there was a call to repair and there was a, there was a repair. There was a call and there was a repair. So, you know, you did your part as a resident, you did your part, but we didn't quite have a plan to fix everything because we didn't know everything. So you can't really say, okay, this has gotta be done. You kind of find out as you go along, you know, what's going on. But, so there was a lack of communication or a lack of finding out, you know, what's going on. And, you know, we can point the finger at everybody here, but really, sitting here and listening to your problems, it's the first time I've heard a problem like this in the city of St. Mary frankly. And we have water leaks and we have sewer problems and we have to fix them. Frank does a great job of that.
He does.
He's on it when it needs to be on it and I have to give him credit, you know, the guy knows what he's doing, he's out and fixing. But the period of time it took, that length of time, winter didn't help us. Uh, continuing to lose water when you don't know where it's coming from is pretty spooky. You know, because the next thing you know, you can't afford your mortgage payment. The water bills are high here. So as an alderman that's listened to this situation, and I'm not over the city water thing, but I think that the city has a problem and you have a problem. There should be some way that we can work this out reasonably. Where you feel good about it and we feel good about it. I don't think, I mean necessarily, I don't know how big this bill is, so we gotta get attorneys involved.
Between the two of them, I think it's around seven thousand dollars.
It's like almost seventy-five hundred dollars.
So.
And there's no other payments due.
I understand that I owe taxes, but it's only about three hundred dollars.
It's a little matter of.
I'm going to get a paid advance.
Right now because you didn't pay.
This is what I'm going with.
Okay. What I'm saying is, you've articulated what has happened is your part and, but you can't say that we didn't come in there and try to make these repairs and do these things.
Yeah.
And what you're here today is to come here and tell us about what exactly happened and Frank just told us. Has anybody come to you, is this your first time in trying to resolve the issue as far as the call struggle?
I, I've been threatened with liens against my house, that my house was gonna be taken away from me for being behind on this year's past taxes and the year before, which it's only about three hundred dollars. I'm gonna get it paid in three weeks when I get my taxes back. That's what I do every year. Just last year, I had to pay St. Jen that two years. I only paid about two years because the other years I took my son on vacation with my taxes. The next year, we do taxes on the house. I know you don't wanna get behind more than two years, so I never get behind more than two years. I haven't in the history of owning my home here. Um, I'm only behind on, I think, around a hundred and twenty dollars for the prior year. This year, I owe a hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighteen dollars. And then I have that three hundred dollar fine or whatever I had for the, um, the tractor and the mowing my yard in September, which I was going to pay with my taxes this year, which again, in three weeks, I just got my taxes done the other day. There's been a lot going on in my life lately. So it just hadn't got done. I get them done here in St. Jen and I live in Jackson, so to figure that out.
I don't worry about the tractor's issue. I guess what I really wanna get down to, Sandra, was, in your night of clothes, you're facing what?
A giant bill.
Yeah, a giant bill. Your being's being turned off.
And I'm being threatened with a lien against my house immediately without even like.
There is a paper standing out.
Well, there's, that's what cities do. When you don't pay your bills, they put links on your house and turn your water off and all those.
I just don't wanna lose my house over something that I truly couldn't control the situation. And then like I said, there was, there was a lack of communication and not Frank, but the other employee didn't do his job perfectly. And then she didn't do her job by even letting me know I needed an occupancy permit to have anything checked out. So I left that house in working condition. I would figure with no one being in there, being working condition when I came back. And so, and then the tractor being one of my problems, the tractor I was speaking about was not the sewer tractor per se. It was back in September when he mowed my entire yard with that tractor. And I, and then they moved all that pool stuff right where that spigot is.
Like this.
Where, right where that spigot is, is where they left all the trash at. So that was why I was, why I mentioned that. Maybe that's how that possibly got there, but I didn't know that there was rusted bolts that could, you know, possibly break on those either. So that was the only reason I even mentioned the tractor and the yard on that.
The thing is that, I hear you, you know, we're all gonna be living together in this town, but what we have, we're not St. Mary's first national bank.
No, and I understand.
And it's hard for us to make arrangements for payments and things like this. The city citizens expect us to collect and pay the bills and that's really what we have to do. You know, but, but listening to the issue, I have to say that there's some place in the middle here, can't we come there and aldermen are gonna just make a suggestion that.
Somebody brings up their legal. I referred legal and I already did. But somebody talks about legal.
So you, you came tonight to say, what was your bottom line here? You came tonight to say, look, what?
I, I, I need to know what we can possibly work out in this situation.
Yeah.
Before I would have to personally get a lawyer in this, because I don't think this is fair with the situation and the circumstances surrounding the incident that I should be responsible for the entire bill. I don't think that that would be fair.
I'm gonna interject here.
As a citizen of St. Mary's.
You're, you're no different than any other citizen that has, that has problems. I think you've articulated the public problems and it's very helpful. But like I said, the city can't be, the city can send a man out and we can send services out and we can keep you running. But without payment and without taking care of your end of that, that we're, you know. So if we're faced, mayor, with having to go to court about this or?
Well, when she's ready to be a lawyer, I have to do what's best for the city. And I do not interrupt me again. I will call point of order and then there could be an issue. If she's been in contact with him every day and she's told the city workers and the fire one that she had no contact, that's bell face lock. I'm not dealing with that. Because she told, there's no, she told me the other day she had, her phone's been messed up.
I have text messages.
Getting hold of him, so if that's the case, under oath, he fixed leak, yes. So he knew it was leaking, but, and she's been knowing. And then also, he knows he knew it was leaked and then somebody dubbed it up, didn't they? And broke it at the spigot. Yes or no? That's a simple question. But then they messed with it and it got worse, did it not? Yes or no? It's a yes or no, Frank. I mean, I'm not arguing with you. Is it a yes or no?
I mean, I don't know if it was actually.
Of course, yeah. Now before it's no.
Um, I have Facebook Messenger. My phone's been on wifi. Frank and I are friends on Facebook. That's why Frank has been in contact with me. There's personal issues here, as you can see, so.
Oh, they're a hundred percent is, they're a hundred percent.
They're accordance five nineteen. We have to stand for Marv on here too.
You have personal issues with this woman.
She doesn't pay your bills.
That's not what this issue is about.
Really? You wanna play this game? Don't do me.
I've done recorded phone calls from city employees and everything.
That's good.
And he was calling me a freeloader yesterday.
I'm glad you've made some enemies in St. Jen.
And he started threatening me, which is why I responded with the fact that I needed to get a lawyer. Because I was being threatened over the phone with him last night. And if you guys recorded any calls, you can hear it.
Go ahead, hold your sheet right and have it.
I did at the very end, after he was threatening me and calling me names and telling me I was a freeloader and then I was saying, so at the very end of our conversation, fine, I will get a lawyer.
Him and him.
So you came tonight to resolve the issue.
I did, without a lawyer, because this is ridiculous that he keeps doing this.
No, it's ridiculous that other taxpayers gotta pay your bill.
May I say something?
Sure.
I've been here ten years. I had a water leak here and I didn't even know I had a water leak. It was a natural spring. Doc, you know what I'm talking about? Mr. Beckett, you know what I'm talking about? Mr. Beckett, I've been paying those bills the whole ten years, over six hundred dollars a month, okay? So I don't see why you have such a problem paying it. And I'm on a fixed income.
Technically, I don't even have to give her the floor. She's not a resident.
Excuse me, I was just, well, I was saying, is there, there's a reason for you to be here, there's a reason for us to be here. And that is to solve the issue, I think. But the, the fact remains that there's money that's owed on your part. And it's got to be collected. The only way we have in order to do that is, is liens and turning things off. So, I guess if you came to ask the board to help you, you need to tell us what you can do or what you expect from us.
What do you expect from me?
Yeah.
What do you, I understand that, you know, and Haley has signed up to take part of that bill. Because, again, they asked to keep the water on for, you know, for the kids or whatever. They had agreed upon to take part of that bill, they are paying off part of that bill.
Yes, we have set up a payment plan with you guys.
What I don't understand, if I can speak, is given, given the situation and given that they're family and given that you had significant expense, you know, with your water bill, why not just say, shut the water off, I'm taking the kids to my house.
We live an hour away and it would work with not adding transportation.
Find a place for them till we can resolve, resolve the problem and then start fresh. That way you cut your damages right from the beginning. And it's even easier to determine, you know, a payment plan or whatever. If none of that was done, that's like twenty-twenty, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, of course. So, as I said earlier, given the number of factors involved, that I don't think it's in, you know, within our capabilities to give you an immediate answer to your request.
We can adjust the sewer on that first part. Gino and Haley are the only ones that made the attempt here. And I give them kudos for that.
I would admit, unfortunately, I was going to be responsible for this bill until just this past week.
I think they should be have to pay the full amount. Because as a landowner and as a landlord, you're responsible, isn't there? It says occupant, tenant, landowner, it says it all on ordinance to the bond series. So are we going to go against the bond series because we're just here to cater to people? Or do we break that bond? I mean, there's a way to do it, yes, we can adjusters to the sewer, that's no big problem. But whatever comes out to be, it works on them out. But the thing is, that's it, you know, and, I mean, he did his part, it was his wife. And they stuck by their word.
So what is our plan to do then?
I'm just wondering about that six weeks where there was a lack of communication between city employees and things not done, right? Obviously, on every reason, um, how do we come to a conclusion of what is? That six, at any point was I told that water is on my meter, it would have been fixed. Because the moment I was told, it was fixed both times. It was not about me not being able to afford or pay for a service or somebody to come and fix my property at all, because it was obviously done. But how do we come to the conclusion that I'm completely responsible for something that the city was even communicating with me was their end of the problem? It was their problem, not my problem, for six weeks. So if I'm responsible for that bill after the city tells me for six weeks that it's their problem and they're fixing it and they're getting it worked on, how is that fair that I have to be?
You're right, you're just saying, who said it's our problem? Like him?
Gina. Frank? You just said it in your testimony.
The binder, yes.
He just said it in his testimony. At the point was it told that it was on, on our end until that grinder was fixed.
It was the grinder issue.
Because of Cody.
But the thing about it is, is I'm going to say this because I remember when this happened because I have it on my phone all day.
Yeah.
So, you guys moved in in February, right?
It was January twenty, I think it was January, I don't know why I keep thinking it's January twenty-first, but I feel like it was January twenty-first when we came up here and spoke to her. And had Cody turn on the water.
We was in, we was in the water, we was in the water cycle bill whenever that water got turned on. So, we would not have seen a high usage when that water got turned on because I'm pretty sure that, that got turned on right after, right after-
Say the meter would have been checked?
The meters were ripped.
Okay.
So then the following month, whenever I found out that we was having the problem, eighty-four thousand gallons was used.
Right.
So, whenever I looked at that, I gave the number to Mr. Mayor Beckett there and Duda, whenever we found out we had water leaking somewhere else besides the grinder.
Right.
And the water was coming off of the, uh, you know, the drinking water side. It wasn't the sewer side. So the thing about it, I had eighty-four thousand gallons. Whenever I told Gino here, I said, hey man, I was like, and Mayor Beckett and Alderman Duda, we're both standing there. I said, look, your water bill's going to be outrageous. I was like, I don't know exactly what it is at the moment, but it's going to be outrageous for, you know, with this usage. The thing about it is, is whenever we found out that the spigot was leaking, which the spigot was leaking pretty, pretty heavy, after it was dug out, it was spraying pretty good there. Um, but then, you know, whenever that got fixed, by me on my personal time, it got fixed because nobody else didn't have a plumber right there in emergency situation. And, you know, I was trying to help out since I know how to do this stuff. Um, the thing about it is, whenever that got fixed, turned the water back on for a minute, seeing that we were still blowing some water out and it wasn't coming from the spigot, it was coming through the driveway or up in the yard, didn't know exactly where at the moment that it was at. I told him, I said, hey man, we're going to shut the water off because I want to see you have an extreme bill. The next big storm, storm's coming in, I don't remember how many inches we got of that. But anyways, I'm like, whenever it came in, you know, he's like, hey, I got kids, you know, blah, blah. I understand and I got kids myself.
Yeah.
And anyways, I was like, I'll turn it on, but it's going to be a high bill, man. I was like, I can't get you here.
Like, like a-
Keep turning on and off.
We, we're willing to eat our part of the bill.
Right, it's not, it wasn't about them doing what they're supposed to be doing and me not. I just wasn't communicated until this week that I wouldn't even be responsible for this.
The thing about it is too, is anytime we have high water bills, and that goes for anybody in the city of St. Mary's. If your normal water usage is way extreme over, I don't care if it's a thousand, two thousand gallons over. If we know that that water bill is continuously, you know, three thousand gallons a month and it jumps to five thousand or six thousand gallons, normally, in my preference, I have the collector or whatever notify me, hey, they've got high usage. Can you check the meter for me? Okay, I go check the meter. Or, they will contact, should contact the resident and say, hey, your bill is this much, did you guys use a certain amount of water? Did you fill up a pool? Did you guys wash twenty million feet with your RV, whatever? That is, you know, our responsibility in a kind of manner to do. Now, the thing about it is, whenever this got turned on, which I did not have the knowledge, it got totally turned on. I didn't know an oxy increment, which I'm saying you did not know that that didn't happen. Because normally, when we do an oxy increment, from the past, when I worked here full-time, I went and turned the water meter on, I sit there and watch that meter. And I would tell whoever's doing the inspection, hey, is the, is the toilet's filling up or is the hot water heater's filling up? Or is there a leak inside that resident? If they say, no, nothing's shown, turn the water, main water off, coming through the floor or whatever. That's going to tell me if there's leaks outside. Anyways, there was no knowledge it just happened. But then, whenever this reading got took place, which they moved in or whatever, that water got turned on after the fact of a meter read or before, like a week or two before, because I think it was a week or two before the next reading, which would have been in February. Anyways, that reading did not, so when that reading showed on there on that meter to the reading that we got for the meter reads in a month, it didn't show that high bill. But then after the fact, that's whenever the eighty-seven thousand gallons went through.
So it was the first part that they didn't show the high water bill, but then there was a high water bill. So it's like, maybe, who knows? The grinder could have broken and broke that pipe backwards, you know? You never know what could have-
Nobody knows underground, it's hard to tell. Gina, go ahead, you have the floor, you've been waiting.
Okay. Um, first things first. Since me and my wife have a payment agreement for a part of the bill, which would be the second part or whatever, from, from, from the time I told them to leave the water on, which I'm not sure exactly what, what day it is or whatever. Are we still going to keep getting late charges for that?
No, no, when you make a payment-
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure on that part. Because I, I mean, it was kind of pointless to make a payment arrangement and then to get late-
Get it on then.
Okay.
Gina, what's the amount of the, of the total bill? Like if you're divided into part A and part B?
I believe, I believe that, because my wife came down here when she got four, uh, one day last week. And I think there would came out to be like thirty-one hundred dollars for our side. The total bill is like seven thousand three hundred dollars or something, to that effect, somewhere close to that. But, I also want to ask a question of what Frank said. If the previous employer turned the water on in no, with nobody's knowledge or nobody's being able to check it, so shouldn't that part of the bill from the time that it got turned on to the time that Frank checked it be excluded? Because that's not on us, because he didn't do his job. He didn't, even though he wasn't, he wasn't authorized to turn it on through Frank or whatever, he turned it on and nothing got checked. So we don't know how long, how much water got used from that time until Frank checked it?
The clerk had to notify him to turn it on. Frank's not the only one to turn the water off.
Okay, but-
I see what you're saying.
But if he didn't check to see if there was any leakage anywhere.
That's what I'm saying.
And he didn't check the meter, so that should, that shouldn't really fall on me or on her for that part of the bill.
But, and then also, there was the patient, your wife said there was a small leak and she was going to fix it. You were fixing.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was nothing, that was just a false alarm, I've seen.
But even at that, I don't know.
I mean, but that was already, that was shut off. Because once, once the water got turned on and it started streaming out. So I shut that, I shut that valve off completely and till, until it got fixed.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't like it was just constantly leaking or running out.
But it probably was underground at the time and-
Well, no, this, because this was inside the house. That leak was inside the house, then the downstairs bathroom. That's the leak that, that, that's the leak that was inside the house that I fixed.
Yeah, that was-
I, I haven't fixed anything outside.
He knew about that leak before he had moved in the house. Because that leak was what I was telling him about. There was a small leak in the, in the, in the bathroom washing area. And then there was a running toilet. And I always had to deal with a little bit of a higher bill, you know, one fifty or so, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. But I dealt with it because I couldn't fix the stupid toilet. Because I had one of those push button toilets and we have such hard water that it just calcinized that bottom. And it was like, okay, so I'm paying an extra twenty-five dollars for a running toilet. I, I really wasn't going to sit here and, I didn't have anything to fix it at the moment, you know? So it was what it was when I lived here. But that was all discussed. That was, those were things that he was supposed to be fixing, you know, moving into the house and getting it back up and taking care of the yard and things like that. So it was like, hey, can you fix a few of these things in the house? There was no actual leak.
Yeah, there was no major, major leak.
At any point, you know, like-
I mean, I did have my, my, our basement flood, but that was because of the sewer backing up into the-
And we had those two cold spells that were outrageous, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Five degrees and zero degrees, you know, those will pop like-
Much less than two feet of snow, it seemed outside all the time.
We're strapped, we're strapped also with really expensive water here. So if you get a little leak and you don't catch it for a few days, the next thing you know, you have seven thousand dollars. That's just unbelievable, what is true. We buy the water and we have to pay for it, the city has to pay for it. So it's not like we have our own pump system here and we're getting it at cost. We're actually paying for it too, and then you pay for it. So, there has to be some type of way to work out.
That's what I'm going to-
Maybe, can I pay what you're paying? Can I pay what you're paying? Instead of paying, instead of paying what a citizen would pay? Can I pay what you're paying? Since this was a half-city mistake at the end of the day? Because nothing was informed to me to do it, right? Obviously, the city didn't do it right, the employee didn't do it right.
Well, so what we're going to do, I'm having her check the numbers right now for you. See what I can do. But of course, if we work out of that, that house will be inspected properly.
Okay, that's fine, the house is great. There, there's no-
That box is not legal.
What box?
That Westinghouse, those are outlawed. The paper fuses have been outlawed for years.
Well, outlawed for years, I only bought the house a couple of years ago.
I know, I'm-
And it got inspected in the past, then?
Talking about electrical codes.
I know, but-
Doesn't matter what existed in the past, what matters is the standards that are in there these days, so.
But if, if you have a house here-
I've had a house for a year, and it's fine.
It doesn't matter if you buy a, sorry, if you buy a house, regardless of how old it is, and you have, uh, kind of like an antiquated electrical system.
I get that. That's not what I'm saying.
It's, you, you know-
I'm saying I passed an occupancy permit with a velocity right-
Let me finish saying what I'm saying instead of interjecting. If you have an antiquated electrical system, then, and you have, uh, you moved back into it or you started using it again, the fact still remains that you got to update it, put in a new box, et cetera, et cetera. That's all, I'm trying to say.
I, I understand that. I'm saying I didn't have to do this a couple of years ago, so I don't understand what the difference is from a couple, if this has been outlawed for so many years.
Yeah, you would not know. But I bought my house, I had fuses in my house too. We were kind of hanging by the wire, which I had to replace it.
Yeah, and I get that.
I'm just saying, the electrical box is not needed, it can be wired directly, it's fine.
Yeah, I don't, it's, it's not needed.
What is it?
That, that, that Westinghouse box, it's not really needed.
No, it's not. That was just a man, whoever owned that house.
I mean, I have a whole box and everything inside that has plenty of breaker.
Yeah, that one just jumped.
You know, that's, that's not-
Yeah, I, I didn't, when I seen it, I didn't understand why they have, they have the little box and they have the big box and then they have, I don't know.
What box is for the sewer, right?
Technically, you're inside the house, that it's run from inside the house and breakers.
Yeah.
Well, I think there's screw fuses too, but I'm, I can't remember inside the house. But it comes out and it goes into, basically what it was is a field switch.
Yeah.
To run the power to the box. But, the thing about it is, is with our boxes, we have breaker install boxes and we want to have an old field switch too.
Yeah.
Anyways, I'm like-
So that's just something, what, I don't use anymore?
It's not needed, no.
But this is right, Frank's right. It's a switch off box outside, but it's wired inside to my breaker box.
Yes.
So, but you don't use that anymore out there?
Well, not the quick disconnect on that. Now, inside our panels, we have disconnects to big tails. We take them apart so we don't run no electric, you know, through on us, so.
The Gina, they're right in this part, right? Haley?
Yes, yes, they already made their claim, they're ready.
Okay, that's what I want to make.
You're making a payment here within the next, do you?
Yeah, I was just making sure.
Because I eat my water.
And that's really, yeah, that, that's-
It's a half.
Yeah, a whole bird, so. Not through the door. So if we take the sewer adjustment first, ordinance and everything? There you go.
Thank you.
That's the first and second reigning total. But if you take the, the-
Sewer off.
Which is an undetectable leak.
Yeah.
Which would, it would be considered undetectable, I guess, at that point.
Yeah.
But after the fact, but turning it on is not. But you make it, I mean, you make it on your way, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's not counting any of the other stuff, but, but, I mean, that can be worked out too.
Like I said, in three weeks when my taxes come back, I, I don't have to be prompting all my taxes, my, my little fine from the-
I'm just trying to keep his kids and him not having, not water, because their bonds would get fined if we-
I don't want them not to have a roof over their head.
I don't either, I know.
I think, I, I think this is fair and reasonable.
I mean, that's left.
Considering these other issues that we had.
Uh, so, well, what he's gonna do is the stuff on payment says two thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. That's, that's the, the adjustment on her part.
Yeah.
So.
So you keep his part.
He keeps his part.
And I keep that part.
That'd be your, I would, that'd be taking the sewer off, which is about almost two grand. And you would just pay the dip, the.
Just the water itself.
Just the water, not the sewer, cause it was undetectable. I, I mean, that's, that's cost right there.
So what we're doing for you, Cassandra, is we are, I'm hoping, Cassandra, but is we're adjusting that sewer bill, okay, now, that we talked about originally. Frank came up there, serviced his thing, and then the eighty four thousand gallons of water here, we're adjusting for you. Is that something that you could feel, that we have done our part, that you could do your part?
I can handle that as a homeowner in the city. I can work with that. I, I can understand that, obviously, I let eighty four thousand gallons of water leak out. I understand you guys have a class at the end of the day. I'm sorry.
What is it?
I just wanna come to a fair conclusion that. I mean, I do vote in this town at the end of the day. I live here, but my address is to that house, my voting address is to that house. I live here at the end of the day. Everything of me is to this house. Him and I are not technically married yet, and I won't change anything until we are at the end of the year, but still. That is my house, that's my residence, so, yeah, I, I can handle that.
Do you feel that there is maybe a, a shortage that you?
I mean, if I could get it lower than that, I'd appreciate it. I mean, I almost could probably get it paid off in a couple of weeks. If you lower it just a little bit more, I would probably pay everything off and call this fair and clear.
That's my hand on the owner of our.
Well, like I said, we, we have to buy water.
I do understand that.
And, uh, and we have to pay bills, and we got, there's nothing.
You gotta keep a mind on here too.
Yeah, there's nothing tied with a small city's budget.
I mean, poor Ms. Pritchard got nears probably sixty grand she paid. And it was on the city's side.
Yep.
Cause they tapped three water lines.
And I still pay it.
And I dug it up and had to fix it, cause I tapped on three lines and she had it. But that, the bond is what the issue is. The waters have gotta pay. We can adjust the sewer, which is almost two grand. Oh, you know, I mean, nineteen.
I, I don't know what the numbers are at the end. I just knew I owed over four grand at the end of the day and I don't have four grand to give you.
No, you can look at it right there, you're more happy to. See the highlighted, that's the sewer. We're allowed to adjust the sewer.
Okay, okay.
And that's off the four grand, and that's what would be difference.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Now, I mean, if that's okay with you, then you can do a payment arrangement.
Is that what I can do?
And then if you ever email, we can set you a count. You can, don't have to drive up here.
That would be even better.
Because our new system takes it online, you can pay online or whatever.
That would be even better. I can, I can tell you right now, in three weeks when I get my taxes, all my taxes will be paid. That fine will be paid, and then I can probably make at least a five hundred dollar payment on this.
Yeah, I mean, even where.
Over the next few months, I can just, as long as I'm paying, if you guys are okay with this, two hundred dollars a month at minimum. And I will try to pay more than that, but at minimum, I know I can really truly only afford about two hundred bucks a month.
I think that's about ten with.
And that's what you would want to do with our clerk here, is make that arrangement, and she'll work with you on a reasonable plan, if this could be more or less, or whatever. I guess by the length of time that you wanna pay, that we wanna collect it.
Yeah.
And, uh. But.
She's gonna get the paper, you can say whenever, call whenever.
So Jess will help you with that?
Thank you. I appreciate it. I really do. I thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Pardon. Thank you guys.
You're welcome. All right, um, I made the motion for recess for coming in for about ten minutes, same time you have a.
Uh, don't.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay. Motion to approve almost. Gino, um, if you wanna go ahead and address the board, you can, we're still here. I talked to Gino, I think it's only fair that he shouldn't have to pay a ton of money either. After that, you know, that he pays more in the principal here. We're still getting our water costs, that's what she's figuring out right now. And due to the, I understand what you mean, what you're saying. We're not changing the water here, I'm talking about the sewer side.
Yeah.
With the sewer issues. Gino, what are you thinking?
I mean, I don't think that, I mean, I do think that the three thousand is a little excessive for like maybe, I mean, what has it been, a month? A month and a half, maybe?
Yeah.
That's a little excessive, but, I mean, like I said, I did give you guys permission to leave it on. Being that I had a bunch of kids under the age of ten in my house, and of course, we all know how they are. Bathrooms and planning, water and sneaking and doing stuff and all that, which I have no problem with that, but. I mean, if I, if I could get adjusted even five hundred dollars or whatever, that doesn't matter, anything like.
All right. She's looking at that now.
Yeah, I think that would be fair.
I mean.
Good idea.
I mean, I kinda came into a bad situation.
He came into, he did, and, and I do agree with some with Brian, some with not, and some with everybody here, some with not. But, I mean, we are all part of this.
Yes, and as far as Missouri.
Failure or not.
As far as Missouri state law goes, as far as the, uh, I O P C permit thing or whatever you guys are talking about. I didn't know anything about it, because I'm not from here.
Oh, I know.
I've only been here seven months.
I know.
All of this is newly.
You look familiar.
Oh, do I?
When I first moved here ten years ago, when they inspected my place, automatically I was told I had to get one.
See, I, I've been.
That was a net, she was.
Nobody's ever told me anything about it. I've talked to Ms. April. I've been here a couple of times and talked to her, and nobody's ever said anything to me about the property thing. I've called her on the phone, I've talked to her.
I was mentioning one from your little living my other place.
If I'd known about it, then I would have.
Mention number up for you guys.
I'm sorry. No, no, I'm talking.
I'll mention up the number for you guys, so you guys can make that decision.
About this.
Perfect, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Chris. So, I mean, if you guys are gonna ultimately make that decision.
Yeah, I would like to, so while that's, while we're waiting for that, I would mention, uh.
Go ahead, Doug.
Uh, it's to enter something under the unfinished business, uh, column, if possible, it's just a reminder.
Do we have a sponsorship on a second for that? Um, anybody wanna sponsorship adjustment?
No, I'll, I'll save it up.
Okay, second, made by Oliver and Helms, all favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay.
It's a small matter, and that's, one of our citizens said that they didn't know what was going on in the city in terms of new employees. So, uh, and I'm talking about Joey, his name's.
Eric.
Eric. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, as a formal announcement, Eric is our new employee.
Well, we have to, he's, yes, he's been working for us, but he wants to go to Carol's side, Joey. The thing that matters most is stay is he already.
Thank you. So that's all.
Okay.
Just to make an announcement that we have two people on board to help with the operation of the city. And, uh, welcome, Eric, I've heard great things about you, and the same thing with Joey too.
And I will say they have, I mean, in the last two weeks, they have completed tasks that have been due since last August. In two weeks.
Awesome.
Completely. That's pretty awesome. Okay. All right, um, let's see.
And we would subtract it from this amount.
Okay, so what would that, very nice, good, really.
We're not all brain geniuses.
All right.
Does the heat work in this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I had, does he know I had to have the heating cool guy come, cause that western mercury was starting to leak out on that. And it was going haywire while they had electric, and that was great. Um, and so there's a new thermostat, and we can turn it up if you like.
Are you chilly? Yes, I'm really warm, very warm.
There's a nice draft.
Why don't you step outside and pull off? So we can definitely. I've got one good ear left, and it's against that thing.
Would that be five hundred?
We need to respond to it.
Yeah.
Maybe you should turn around.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, Gino, so which have four ninety eight thirty three off that? Your bill would be two thousand five hundred ninety two and eighty one dollars on the payment arrangements, no late fees, metrics or anything. That takes away the service charge, all that stuff. I mean, that's pretty much your amount. That's, that's all I can do on a sewer, but that still brings you down. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I mean.
It's right about five hundred.
That's acceptable.
I mean, it's up to you.
Anything, like I said, anything better than nothing.
I mean, and we'll just put it on here, and we'll subtract it from the total amount. And just, you know, like I said, you and Haley, just do your thing.
Yeah.
You know, we wanna try to keep your water on, and whatever, if you wanna work out between you and the, the pack and you, that's your guys' business, so.
Yeah, I'll talk to her about that when I get home.
Okay. All right, um.
Gino, would you mind signing this again, please?
No, no problem.
On behalf of Haley, is that okay?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Are you guys okay with that, the four ninety eight?
Four ninety eight thirty three.
All right, four ninety eight thirty three.
So this is the original amount, Gino, this is what we're taking off, this will be your pool. And these are the arrangements Haley made with you. And nothing else changes. Um, except for your sign right here, and then I'll pay you the damn for today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Any other need for us?
Um. No.
Anybody for?
You know I will. You know I will. Yes, but thank you.
Thank you.
For being patient and not being too hostile, but, you know.
Well, I was getting to that point for a little bit, but.
It'd be all right.
You guys showed up, you and Frank showed up and.
And it is solid over the weekend. So solid is solid, right?
Yeah.
So there you go.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Gino.
Good night.
Night.
God have you.
You too. All right. Okay. Anybody else wanna sign up the sheet, is that sheet? I think you did, didn't you?
The other day I talked to you about it.
Oh, do you wanna wait till the end, or you wanna do it now?
I'll go ahead and do it now, uh.
So you can go on.
After all, you guys got your butts chewed out. First of all, my name's Connie Pritchard.
Connie, what's your address for the record?
Which, which one?
Uh, the current.
Four sixty one Cedar Street.
All right, thank you for the record, four sixty one Cedar Street.
I'd like to thank all the Aldermans. I know a couple of you weren't on the board here six months ago. I've had some issues going on. And Mr. Duda, Miss, Mrs., uh.
Burke, right?
Burke, man. And Mr. Beckett, and Frankie had my back. Um, they supported me with everything. The little guy that stole my property gave it back to me today. And I'm thanking you all for that.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, and I need to see if I can get some demolition permits.
Okay.
Clean up permits.
Sure. You get, get Jessica, she can get you the permits and everything, and, um. Just be busy, though, just so us know what you plan on doing, so.
Absolutely, I'll plan, I'll put her in the trailer rack.
Okay.
Connie, what's your last name?
Pritchard.
Pritchard.
Yeah.
You don't have to tell it, rabbit.
Did you say Pritchard, Pritchard?
Pritchard, P R I T C H A R D.
A R D. Pritchard, okay.
And I'm happy that it worked out for you. I know that was a tough one, and we brought that huge in there, but.
Boy, was it.
But at least it worked out and you got your thirteen months back, so.
Yep, and one more. I'd like to donate ten to thirteen to the City of St. Mary's. Once I get my deed in hand, um, we've got, they've, you can put some gravel in and stuff back there and fill in that, uh, sinkhole. And ten to thirteen, I'd like to donate to them, once I get my deed in hand, and we'll go from there.
Great, thank you, okay. Well, we'll be in session, we'll work on that, with the serving of things, going with that. Sounds good?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I appreciate everybody's support.
You're welcome, thank you.
No.
Have a good night.
You too, bud.
All right, unfinished business, updated state taxes overdue, reflection, shut off, or non payments. Is that attached to this?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll hear.
The very last page.
This is the total over here, the white, ten dollars at the bottom.
Uh, yes.
And what was our original collection amount, do you remember? It would be.
I didn't pay it to you.
Uh. Let's see here. Okay, it's real estate, real estate.
What does architectural homes mean?
That is, uh, easy home, L O C, the ones that sell the, the lactated houses in town. That are falling down from pictures from like nineteen ninety. They have, uh, ten DBAs. If you go on their website, if you look at that house down here, next to Mr. Schultz's lot.
Oh.
It looks like the picture from Google Maps from ninety six. Like, it looks nice and you can live in it. I mean, it's got a skylight now. And I mean, it's not, so. Uh, so on tax, we have like this. Okay. We should have hit it right here for a minute. I think it was, it was around thirty seven, was it?
Yes, it was.
It was around thirty seven thousand dollars, and this is left at three years, cause the past few years weren't collected. So we went and hit it hard on collections.
Well, well done.
So they were pretty good outstanding on this. Um. They go did some of it, but, yeah, we, uh, we, we went and got that, and you'd be surprised how quick shut offs turns. And the money paid back to the city was owed.
Good job.
So, um, some of these, I got a meeting with the city attorney, cause they're collections, cause they don't have anything here, and it's what they owe. So what they can do is go on their wage or something, and he can take care of it like one big thing, and then he's get paid that way. Kind of like you do with the fines and stuff like that, so, um. Really not much left, one, about fifteen hundred, and it's not much added at all.
And there's only three clients that have, uh, anything big, they were bigger, I mean, two hundred fifty dollars, two hundred sixty. Um, and that's pretty much.
Yeah, that's it. So, I mean, yes, Ms. Pack knew that, she, she still owes, but she knew that. She's right there on number twenty four.
She's gonna take care of that.
Yeah, so, I mean, Sharon, I mean, some of these are just small amounts, but we're, compared to where we were.
Yeah.
I mean, having three years going through that binder, it, it took a while, so. But, uh, we do have some shut offs, I'm sure, by the twenty first, we will have some, cause some past due water balances or getting a little out of control again. Without payment arrangements, so if you guys see anything you wanna discuss, let me know.
I'm good, if you guys are okay with that.
You okay with that, numbers?
Yeah.
I can show you the past numbers if you need to be, but it takes some time, but I just wanna, we're supposed to be aware of this every tax season. But then I assume we had like three years and thousands and thousands of dollars, so we collected quite a bit. So I can get you the total amount and send it through your email to your life. Um, all right, so moving on. Income survey status, uh. Public suggestion regarding lower in rate or hearing benefits. Uh, return, right, you know, in return. So where are we at? You don't have any we have so far?
I have a stack.
And the survey was for adjusted gross income?
Uh.
That's the income survey that we were, we sent out, yes.
The grant, the grant survey.
And people were supposed to report their adjusted gross income?
Yes, you were correct.
I think we were at, we were at thirty four, thirty five.
Thirty five. Some of them are not voided, weren't done properly, so we go ahead and, well. I mean, I met, I talked to RPC today about that, and they have another one, so they'll be here to talk to us next meeting, so.
The second one, this one that we talked about, that's getting the better chance of.
The CBDG, and that's coming up, they're gonna be here on the next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to them today, they were gonna try to make it tonight, but.
So what's the percentage of response?
Oh, gosh, I'm speaking. Oh, gosh, it was three thousand, fifteen or eighteen percent.
Easy, easy, um, I, I went around to some people, because they've asked me, and I just asked them, they got it, and it just had it laying on the table. And, you know, they didn't know, I, I explained exactly what the benefits were, then they filled it out and brought it.
Yeah, so, the note that was sent out wasn't adequate.
I don't think it was.
An explanation for them to respond.
No, it wasn't that, um, what is, what.
Let's please, Connie.
Well, what the killer was, I think, was signing your name to something, and had your income on it.
Well, I mean, it's, it's still, I mean, I understand it's a killer, but it's no different than them signing into a check. I mean, I get the routing, and everything, never was a difference.
So, again, for the city, we're doing an income survey, and the purpose of it is to help us get funding to, uh, revamp our, uh, water and sources, water and sources. So, it's imperative that we do that, because the surveys that were done earlier were, uh, seen, deemed to be inaccurate, and would put us out of, uh, the, uh, bump us out of the process. So, if we had an accurate survey done, which we're attempting to do, or request all the citizens to, uh, help us, help us and themselves out with this, then, uh, it's, uh, for the benefit of everyone, and it'll address these issues that we're having, and I don't, can't commit to it completely, but it looks like if we do go through with it, it will actually result. It's likely to result in a decrease in what we're paying for our water and sewer. So, it's a win-win, uh, and we need everybody's cooperation to do it.
We're at, um, ten point four percent return. That's where we're at right now with that, with the collections.
And the original plan, first of all, Yeoman's effort to get the thing put out to everybody.
Yeah.
I don't know about explaining everything about it, the form is pretty self-explanatory, but we did put a note in there about, um, asking our community to help us, because it would, in fact, help us get a grant that would help us perhaps lower our sewer bills. So, they got the point, they listened to anything else, unless you wanted to throw a bonus in there, of giving everybody something off their water bill, which would have cost us sixteen hundred dollars, and we decided not to do that, with the risk that we probably wouldn't get everything back. So, spending the sixteen hundred dollars, uh, you know, versus getting everything back, yeah. So, but anyway, we did pay the postage, and we sent everything out, and, uh, April was a big help, you were here the day that we did it. But the original plan was, let's send these out, and for the people that did not send theirs back, we could make a call, we could divide the leftovers out of those twenty or thirty that were not returned, we could just call the resident and tell them how important it is to have, and then return it, you know, to us. But, um, the likelihood of that particular survey, uh, giving us the, uh, response that we wanted was kinda shaky from the beginning. It was, you know, but, uh, we do have another opportunity, and this next opportunity is, uh, it's gonna be tough, also. But if you need a longer explanation, and people wanting to get involved, uh, with, you know, signing this document, and getting us to, uh, the bond, getting us to the grant, to do the survey, uh, we might want to prep them in advance about what's coming, you know? Either in a newsletter to the people, or, uh, but, I think if they were to understand more the importance of it, and what we're trying to do, if, if I had a help, but, um.
Well, we did have several set public meetings regarding this, including the significance of it, and what was upcoming.
Yeah.
We have representatives from RP.
RPC, Regional City Commission, River Water, Harlan Engineering, um, Sandra Cather from Economic Development, I mean, it was.
How many people, how many people attended this, some are unsure.
Uh, I'll have to go back to see, I don't keep count, I wish more people would show up, but they have lost faith in this board, and I won't go into why, but they probably know.
Yeah, well, I think the attempt was a, a good attempt to get it out, definitely practiced, but, uh, originally, we did say that we could put it in there as a motivator to have people return their survey, uh, to give them a discount off their water bill, and that extended out, like I said, was sixteen hundred dollars. And we just didn't feel like we could afford to do that, but, um, short of that, with the next survey, we have to be on top of it, we have to get it out on time.
Well, we won't be doing it if we can't, by their law, their rules, they do it, we pay them four hundred dollars, and they go to our door. That's Seago, Regional Land Commission, they actually, or these are the ones doing it.
The documents that we have to get to them.
Yeah, which, they have the one, our refinallize, and we bring in that to get that, and then, we just gotta get a letter that, requesting, uh, approval and permission to do this, and then, once they say yes, then they can go ahead.
And it's a really tight time schedule, so to be, it was like, we don't have much time now.
No, we don't, I mean, lots taken, so, I mean, whether we, we can agree tonight, as an emergency resolution or vote on it. And say we want to request that for the community development block grant, which has always been pretty good for us.
This is a federal grant.
That's one, yes.
And we're talking about expenditure of around five hundred dollars.
Yes.
Uh, for them, and then getting up our documents as a city to them on time to get it started, to get this thing out. And, uh, and it should be happening right away, I think, in the next two or three. Uh, but I did get a feeling, I've talked with the folks that are administrating this, administering it, that, um, it's gonna be an uphill climb.
On the second one.
The second one.
Yeah, second one.
Just as tough as the first one, but there's, uh, more, maybe even more of a chance of the second one, but both of them are slim.
They're slim, it is, and.
And then we just, uh, move forward with contacting people, uh, in the interim, to get our, uh, return rate higher?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, and I mean, if they put it on, I could only charge, I'd put it on the radio, like.
Yeah, how many connections are there, uh, I mean?
There are one seventy-nine, I believe.
So, and we have seventeen or eighteen responses?
Um, no, we have, uh, I mean.
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty-two of them.
Um, if you'd like, uh, when water bills go out this month, I can put a note.
Yeah.
On their water bills, there's a, a way to put it on the backside.
Yeah.
A note from the city.
Yeah, please, uh, that way, let's just keep on working it, until we get.
Yeah.
All the time.
What we did on the, the original water systemic, we did get put through, is there was general assemblies for the community. And we did it in C N A, C N A, is it, C N A, what is the, um?
The C M A Hall.
Yeah, C M A Hall.
I thought about that.
And, uh, and we did it through the newspaper, but we did contact, we did get good audiences. You know, at the time, we were trying to close bond issue, and then raise, uh, awareness of putting the water system in, it was tough, it was a tough. Uh, and we had to get a grant, matching grant, it was exactly that we're talking about with the sewer system. But, uh, I think the general assembly really worked, and that's where we could bring in, not long-winded people, but people that can talk to our, our, uh, community, get the point across about what we're doing, get a vote, and saying, look, guys, if you wanna do this, let's get this form filled out tonight, get it done over there, super big enough, you know? And the one, I think that this, I think the residents would benefit with a more of a contact than just a piece of paper in the mail.
They would, and that's, and I talked, I tried to, I spoke to Lou Barnes about, right, see how much the C M A Hall, just having a public hearing with meeting the city officials, a meet and greet, just something like that, and I'll pay for dinner, I don't care, or something like that, just to kind of, kind of. You know, then we could do that there, but like, explain that there, because Michael wants to be there, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I've been, we've been going through so many scenarios, venues, and different things.
Yeah, I don't think we just, I think we had an open bar.
That's it, I mean, yeah, I mean, open bar, we did it.
We didn't have food.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can do open, I'm sure open bar, we get them.
But I think once the citizens realize how hard we've been working at this, even with this first survey attempt, and then with this next one, and then know the importance of what's happening with the worst, with the sewer system, and the fact that it's antiquated, and it needs to have a, a, a long-range plan on what to do with it, how to fix it for our future generation, for the kids that live here, you know, twenty-five years from now, and for, we'll be on. Uh, except maybe the mayor might still be hobbling around, but, uh, but we need, we're trying to think of the future, and I think, uh, uh, if, if we were able to get people together and talk about those things, I think these people would jump on board.
Are they able to, I mean, it's, the consensus, and that's what I, and I go around and ask, you know, what would you like? What, I mean, what would you like to see? Because, I mean, people have, they're used to these same old meetings, or peenin' meetings, blah, 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 yeah, we have screaming, or whatever, that, whatever happened before. But, but, their, their answer was raise rates, raise rates, raise rates, raise rates. You know, people lost so much faith, and it's crazy, you know, it's crazy, and then we reach out to our county. Even Doc has, you know, trying to figure out stuff, it's just, it's an uphill battle, but we're gonna get through it. I don't care, I've been knocked down a bunch of times, and I'm coming right back up. So, you know, I mean, whatever you guys think would work, let's try it.
Yeah.
If I gotta put a bill, I don't care, I mean, I understand postage, but, open bar probably would do it.
Well, I was thinking, you know, we have these documents we talked about, we have about these folks, uh, these, uh, government. Bringing them together with the, with the application, with the audience, we could group the people, we could get seventy-five or eighty of our residents there. It might not be mom and daddy, but it might be the daddy, it might be the mommy, and, you know, yeah, but we would get most of the audience in there. We could get a lot of that done in one night, and then also motivate the people that aren't there to get theirs filled out at home, or whatever, so we can get going. But they need to know that it's important to us as a city, for our future, to get to moving on the sewer system, and, uh, uh, so, I'm for the general assembly, and working out, having our paperwork there, you know, clerk's there signing everybody up, the mayor's there telling the story, have the, um, the government there, tell what they can do to help us with that, uh, the bondage, I'm not bondage, but with the, uh, grant, uh, and, you know, we're not, it's a lack of communication, I think most people, uh, know it has to be done, uh, get them informed, and they'll help us.
Yeah. Anything else on that, and Doc, you have any suggestions?
That's what I said, I would just push, I would just push getting, uh, results, uh, on the other thing, and, uh, just be determined, and keep on, not give up, just keep on, uh, going forward with it, until we get answers. And, and then, uh, once we get answers, then we can move forward and get our funding, you know, to do these other, uh, studies, and, uh, get the job done, so.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, not stop, just because we didn't have an adequate response first time around.
No, and I wouldn't have stopped, just because we had a bad experience the first time around.
Yeah, and a personal touch is helpful, you know, like if, if we call, or, you know, the people come in, and, uh, they, you know, ask them to fill it out, and, you know, put it discreetly in the box, or something, if they don't wanna turn, and they're out there, or whatever, but it's confidential, so, uh, uh, and it's coded in a way where it's by a user number, instead of by name, or something, isn't it?
Well, they put their name, they sign it, they put, I mean, it's just a general form, and it goes straight. They don't trust that safe out there, since there was issues before, but, uh, it's, that works, but, they don't want people knowing their personal information, which is fine. People, you know, that's right, and it is nowadays, and I don't, you know.
It's valid, there is intent, obviously.
So, it's just getting them to gain that trust, and I think, you know, like you said, general assembly, and then getting their trust, and even putting a lockbox, I got them. I mean, I'll break the key off, and then nobody, we'll just have to cut the bolt off, you know, to get into it, so, but, it goes straight to the officials, you know? And then they count, you go through it, and make sure, and once that, boom, 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 I mean, it just falls into place. It's not easy, it's not easy, though, we get to do it, so.
It's, it's informing the, the residents, and, you know, about the condition of the, of the sewer plant, and, uh, about our process on getting grant money to fix it, and how they see the future of St. Mary without it, and, um, I think those, that kind of information will help to get people moving.
Yeah, and will. And, you know, I mean, we were left with a mess, but I know we can pull out of this, we, we persevered so far.
Yep.
So, but, alright, moving on, um, new business. Camptown election results, and acceptance by the board, which, nobody ran against you, so, you guys may have a motion to accept the election results?
Uh, make a motion to accept the election results.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Well, second.
All the way, Rosa, please, second in motion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, swearing in of elected officials, so Doc, you're the only one here tonight to be sworn in, Kathy will have to do another time.
Okay.
So, I, she can swear you in, I can get you to swear in right there, if you need it.
Get him right in, right, sorry.
Yeah. It's not hard, alright, I can handle it.
You do it, and I'll do it.
Alright, I'll show you.
Please don't make us take it, I'm trying to.
Do what? If he wants to, he can turn around, it's normal.
Are you hot, I can turn it on.
I'm hot, I'm perfectly comfortable.
You're cool?
We're cool.
Oh, this doesn't work at all?
It does, I'll just have to turn it up.
I'll never hear someone talk again.
That ain't be good for you.
I have a little heater I can put over there, but.
Yeah, okay, we'll take it. There's a pink heater right there.
He doesn't want it all.
Right next to it.
Yes.
Oh, didn't know that.
She's got a little heater, this is, uh, blue on there.
Thank you, very much.
Alright, where is, where is it?
Uh, it won't work if it's tilted.
Oh, boy, that goes warm, and we weren't blocking at all, I'm gonna go get the water works.
Yeah, we, we also, uh, was nominating a, uh, a, uh, pro-ten, I.
Mayor Prokén?
Yeah.
Yes, we can do that.
I'd like to.
Make the nomination?
Make a nomination, that's what we're gonna do, uh.
Okay.
It's involved in the past, I'm behind on the future.
Is there a second on the table, or?
I'm gonna stick.
Oh.
Uh, there's, um, I'll go back, so, a moment of information's gonna be, uh, Oregon Helms made a, uh, recommendation for Dr. Zandu, uh, before, for his name, Mayor Prokén, I think. And, so, there's a motion on the table, is there a second? A motion made, second all favor? Uh, any opposed? Okay, Doc, congratulations. Welcome to our here, uh, I've got, I need a swearing sheet, so, I'm good. You already, that's a more, and, so, you already did your, we'll just have to do some of them.
Okay.
So, I mean, unless you want me to do an placement one, but then I'm gonna have to do the basic. Okay, okay, alright. Alright, let's, uh, okay, got that resolution, uh, resolution for baking authorizations, okay, I took care of that, but, I just wanna let you know that, uh, helped, uh, Jessica get that done, but just so you know. Um, Jessica's on there, I'm on there, and Dr. Duda's on there, is there any reservations to those baking authorizations for signing? Okay, alright, I just wanna make sure, so, um, and I also took the prior people off, so they have no access to it, just so you know. And we will be getting new cards that has their previous name on it, so there's, you know, transparency, no access, so.
Okay.
Alright.
So, Mayor, I've got something that I'm gonna bring up, kind of, a detail on that.
Yeah.
So, in the, in the, in the check writing process, the clerk handles finding the check for whatever issue we have, paying a bill, thing, or grinder, or whatever it is. One of you are gonna be signing, and then the clerk is gonna sign, so is the one signing the check, the one that's gonna approve that? Invoices underneath that check, is that how you do that? You attach the check to the invoice?
Yes, yes.
So, if we ever need to go back to find out who approved to buy that grinder, or to buy whatever it is or lot, the person that signed that check is the one that's approved that purchase?
Yes.
Good.
There's all the paper trail on that, and she served her file. There's all the paper trail on that, and she served her file for twenty twenty-five, we got that filed in, and so.
And what about the purchase order that should be accompanying?
Okay, so how does that work? Okay, if you guys go buy anything, unless it's outrageously, Ricky come, you know, talks to me, if anybody else is around. If it's emergency thing, we have to have it, you know, it's just like, that's just what it's what it is, one source provider. But, I mean, the other stuff, like a light bulb or like, when he works on the vehicle, saving us thousands of dollars and stuff, the PO. His PO would be from the department that it's going to.
Right.
Then we take it out of that department, so on and so on. So purchase orders help, so we don't have a bunch of miscellaneous and have to go back and look. The fire department does it too, it puts seventy, eight hundred typically, I think that's Tyler. You know, another tire, not that one. But, so that's how we kinda keep checks and balance, unless you wanna go to a series of numbers.
Well, I think it's, you know, the PO is good for these large purchases, especially because they're generally approved by the board. You buy a new board or something like that, but that's a line item in our budget. So, uh, if it's not in our budget, if you can't identify it within the budget, it definitely needs to be approved by the mayor.
Yeah.
If it's in the budget, and we've been approved to buy ten toilet seats, and we need ten toilet seats, then the person that's buying the toilet seats should be able to buy those with a PO.
Yeah.
And and you'll like, you'll pay for it, and then whoever signs the check has approved it.
Yeah, I'll say, okay, okay, we already knew we had ten, we needed ten.
Yeah, and then the other day I signed a check for, I think it was Cape Electric, it was five hundred and something dollars or something, it seemed high, but I know, you know, copper's expensive and electrical supplies are always expensive, but it didn't seem like it was shopped. Oh.
Yeah.
A bit or anything like that.
Ricky, you had me put on those, that's contact your chief order?
So the contacts we got ordered, they're about a, anywhere from ninety to a hundred and some dollars. Uh, the contacts that we get, they're based on amperage, uh, what system we're putting in. So the miter comes itself, takes about thirteen amps to fourteen amps. And uh, they're a little bit higher than yield cost, or, you know, amperage. So they're gonna cost a little more than this here three and five amp breaker. Um, so the thing about it is Cape Electric, they always have them on hand. Anyway, that's the reason why we did them from there.
We kinda lean on the market for those types of things, because the market's gonna drive the best price, you know. If I was selling them and they were selling them, you know, the market said it was a good price. My question is until it is, is, does he have to get everything small like that approved? I mean, he's making the decision to buy this part that he needs. If it's under a certain amount of money, he should be able to say, we need some fuses, it's not in the budget. It's a hundred and fifty dollars.
It is.
Is that how it works? And then he can get a PO on it?
So the way that it always worked, the whole time going to work in New York. So if it's under five hundred dollars, we was allowed to actually go out and get what we need to do. Normally, we'd get our hand across clerk, the mayor, and that was it. If it was to be approved, the reason why we had to spend it for that. Emergency purposes, say water main break or not. But anyway, water main breaks, I gotta go get Hymaxes or something if we didn't have them. It's gonna be, I call private mayor, tell him I'm, I'm going to the corn main to get Hymaxes. Don't worry about the cost, because we gotta have, you know, we're gonna have to have. But if it's anything like, um, you know, odd man stuff, say fire department lies, I wanna get brand new LED lights for the truck, because it looks better. That, you know, then that there would be a cost big, you know, like going out and trying to find.
It's gonna approve for them for big.
If it's something to do like with a waterline project or anything like that, that goes out for bids. Or, you know, anything like that. But um, a lot of times your sales reps, like I have three of them here, you know, for the water side, and then two of them, or three of them, basically four. Um, sewer side, uh, for electrical. But like Cape Electric, I know they have one hand, I ain't gotta worry about ordering, waiting for them to order them, and then get them to me. I can run down there and get them, unlike another facility. I'd have to order them, they will have to get them, nine times out of ten, they come from Cape Electric, and then the cost jumps.
Yeah. Uh, what Dr. Duda was saying is, if we have these purchase orders, it really helps us with our with our budget process of the next year. Because we we look and we see, I use this kind of analogy before, but if we, if we want ten grinders this year, and they're not all in the budget, next year we wanna probably make sure that we put ten grinders in the budget, you know? So, so that we can go to the budget and know that we can budget it for that, and the PO really helps, especially with big items. You know, we talk about miscellaneous, you know, fuses might go into electrical line or something like that. But my big question to follow up on this is, the the our credit card, who, uh, once something's on the card, we don't have a record of what happens, and we can't really depreciate that five thousand dollars that's on the credit card or whatever, you know? Uh, that's really important then to have a PO.
Yeah.
Uh, because the PO goes along with the uh, the charge that goes through with the date the charge is. So the PO would be September the tenth, twenty twenty-five, and the charge on the credit card would be the same thing to that electric. And so a PO is important to write that down, and the fact that we use the credit card number ending in forty-nine ninety-nine or whatever. So that if we have to go back, the of the credit card statements, we can figure out what the heck of that was that we bought it for. So POs are very important in a credit card situation, that's, we're, uh, in theory, we're not supposed to be holding things on credit cards, we're supposed to be paying a credit card balance off monthly. You know, we bought the thing for four hundred and fifty dollars, we got the PO on it, we paid it off that month, we just did that out of convenience of having to have that card. The card's not to give us a line of credit, you know? So, going forward, I guess, we're gonna need POs on the credit card purchases too.
That one we have, the bank, has POs on it. I checked that today when I was talking to Alice, our banking person. So, I mean, I mean, most of them, there was, it has exactly where they spend it, what time, date, and everything, I mean, down to a T. And even when the digital signatures, so.
Yeah, so if we got a statement in, I guess all our statements now are online, I guess. Good. Paper is good to trace and follow. You can, uh, you can attach a purchase order to that.
Yes.
And then we just pay it.
Pay it monthly on time.
It's easier on the audit, because that was, we had dinged on the audit, there's a draft audit, I haven't signed it yet. Because that was one of the things, purchase orders was one of the things the auditors found, they needed to be corrected in a better fiscal way, so.
Do you have the results of that audit?
Yeah, I I just got them yesterday, day four, she's got a copy, but it's kinda gettin' a little reek. But there, it's just a draft, it's not all made done yet, but this is what their recommendations are. I'll email it all to you guys, and you can read over it. But nothing's been signed and approved, so. But that was one of them, just letting you know. And of course, you know, more other stuff, but um, that that PO was a big deal, because then like Jess had it set up, they can just come in, go to that drawer for the year, boom, 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 it's right there. It's done, you know? Mary and Adam is probably too bad a day for you, so we. So, I do, yeah, the POs are important, which he knows, he knows, he knows, so they all know, you know, or they don't, they'll fall, you know? And if it's, if it's emergency like the corn here, you know, we needed that. I mean, and, you know, Frank can, I mean, it's not something we can't have, required to coordinate a war.
Right.
And it's one source place, so, I mean, we had to get it.
Something really can't look at, knitting something out like that, we should purchase it.
Now, I'm the ones living on prayer, you know? So, all right, I'm sorry to be near Jeff there.
That's a good thought.
I mean, did you have anything? I mean, is there, is there any way you want to do the PO different, or they died?
No, I just wanna make sure that it's done, it's fully implemented, and it's, you know, there's no errors or, you know, failure to provide one with expenditure for all reasons that Mr. Alton mentioned.
There's a policy to use them and a procedure on how they're used.
Yes, and I mean, there have been some in the past, but we're breaking that now, we're fully, so. Great, all right. Okay, uh, this is just a resolution authorized the mayor on behalf of the city to enter or renew mutual aid agreements between adjoining counties and municipalities. So all this is, is pretty much like mutual aid for like Randolph County. He's dual commission now with the sheriff of Randolph County, because it takes him forty-five minutes. So he has a full rest rise of everything as deputy over there at this time.
Great.
Um, and also Perry County wants to reach him. That's just no different than what we got with the county, I guess we have mutual aid with the county. But Doc can explain that later if he wants, how that went, but um, I did have a chance, I wanna thank the city of Perryville actually, because um, they donated a, you know, police car to us.
Wow.
A new one, not new, well, newer. Um, it's a twenty thirteen Ford, Ford Interceptor. Or Ford Interceptor, and now it has forty thousand miles on it. So at no cost, and that was just out of good faith gesture to show that they have our back for helping them and doing things with it too, so.
So we're lined up with a replacement police car, there's some stuff that will need to be done with it, is that right?
Yeah, it needs to be updated, but some of that stuff will work, some of the warmth is newer, I mean, I think with age difference.
Right, but uh, so far we have no cash in it going in, because it was a gift to us from.
Yes, yes, that was true. And I wanna thank Mayor Rickley and the board for taking that to their meeting and voting on that.
No, it's very appreciated by the board and the city.
And Jeremy Tan, because it's sad that our own county couldn't even help us when they got a stack full. And Perryville's been more happy to reach out and help, and we've helped them, and so if we ever need issues with sandbags and stuff, it's always, if you come reach out to them, they'll help us with everything.
Now Perry County's been great, even like with the issues related to water, when there are troubleshooting stuff, and they're quite helpful, and it's awesome, appreciative, so.
That's what that resolution.
Is that mutual aid resolution also included the fire department?
There we go, yeah.
Oh, you're good.
But I don't know what's gonna happen with this district.
You still gonna be the same?
Okay, so, I mean, yeah, this is just something like, like sir. And, you know, things like that, they ask us, hey, we need some help, or can we, can you guys help us on this little part of the county, or something like that? You know, or something like, you know, anything.
So regarding this bill, you know, I've moved that we uh, accepted or approved it, and it kinda surprises me that we even have to do it, because it's a common sense thing for.
That would be followed then.
Parameters and appropriate of a mayor anyways, so.
Yeah, well, beforehand, I mean, it was not very, so.
All right, so.
I'm moving on, if you, or do you wanna vote on that? I mean, you guys.
I'm ready.
The bill number, uh, one thousand six?
Yeah, resolution authorized. Mayor on behalf of the city renewed mutual aid agreements between adjoining counties and municipalities by your daddy homely. We're gonna do a real call vote. Alderman Helms?
Yes.
Alderman Zen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman Rosewood?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're gonna do the second reading, just to make sure. Bill number one thousand six. Resolution authorized mayor on behalf of the city in entering mutual agreements between adjoining counties and municipalities. And then the real call, so is there a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second on the floor?
I second that.
Alderman Rosewood second it, all favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, it's adopted. All right, departmental reports. Uh, well, fire department, go ahead Frank. Kathy's not here.
Huh?
Huh? Okay, fire department didn't do it.
All right.
Fire department.
Anyways, I'm a, had six public calls, uh, two medical, three mutual aid, and one fire alarm challenge. Um, as you all know, seeing the votes, district did pass uh, for Saint Jim City and us. Um, so we're gonna be in the process of starting to uh, do a meeting, getting with the board members that we're voting on to. Um, and start putting things together, so. Um, I don't know exactly officially when everything's gonna start setting over, but I'm a, it's a, they got voted in, so. Uh, one's good on your guys' part, good on our part too. I mean, helps out both sides of the fence, so I'm a, I know with the, you know, fire tags and stuff, and not getting on our fire tags, like the folks do, that takes a big burden out of our general fund too. Uh, when we're not getting the fire tag, the fire tag running.
Yeah, do do they collect fire tags or?
Uh, so it's all on a tax basis now.
Okay.
Uh, so everybody they sacs and going through the county.
Well, I think that we should be pretty proud of the fact that they want to be involved with us, and we wanna be involved with them. We've done a good job with our fire department, so if it was lackluster or wanting to meet in the grade, they would be interested.
Yeah, um, but the way I understand it, we're still gonna be staying, we're still mutual aid Perryville, you know, uh, I, just agreements are gonna have to be different now, um, it's not gonna be per se me signing off on their agreements, mutual aid in the city here, it's gonna be the board members, I'm up on it now, but we're still gonna be the same, basically same fire department.
Fire board, or the, what board members?
Uh, it'd be the fire, fire district board members, of course.
Is it gonna, wait, I'm sorry, is it gonna be, uh, when, uh, do the changes become effective or implemented?
That, I'm not a hundred percent on yet, um, they was talking always, but I'm not a hundred percent yet on that. Uh, we still have committee meetings to go to, to find out, um, we're gonna hopefully get to meet the board members and stuff, and see how everything's gonna go. About from there, and talk to our attorney and stuff over it, so.
When do we get a list of the board members and the whole organization that you're talking about?
You what?
When do we get information on that?
Uh, hopefully, hopefully in the next couple of months here, hopefully, hopefully things start. I mean, it just got passed Tuesday, so.
Okay, so did you pass that, and you have some like a motion to pass, some type of resolution to run up or something, what was passed?
So to, so, um, the fire district, it was asking for the whole county to go fire district.
Yeah.
Uh, and it was on the ballot, uh, this past Tuesday, so it got, it got passed, the vote got passed, you know, so. Uh, to be a fire district in the county.
Right, well, there should be a written document talking about that, talking about the merging, but have you seen that?
No, not yet.
Uh, are you gonna be able to get one to us?
Uh, hopefully.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I gotta wait on paperwork, just same, same way, you're one paperwork, I gotta wait on two.
Well, I mean.
So I'd like to see the inventory.
Yeah, we're almost in the city, you know, the mayor should have a copy of that, because we need to bring that to the board, it needs to be in our.
And then as I understand it, it's gonna be a savings to the city too, because the city won't be funding certain things.
They won't, they won't be funding the fire department anymore.
Insurance either.
No, I think, I think it's supposed to go, and everything's supposed to be taken over as.
Would that eliminate the chamber of commerce's influence on the fire department as well?
Uh, I can't answer that a hundred percent right now. I mean, so, I mean, I gotta wait for paperwork, just like you guys do, so, and my meetings.
Do you wanna have Jeremy get all the attorneys to the litigation, like for the assets or something?
I think they're actually supposed to start compacting.
Okay.
That's what I was probably getting across, it's, we're waiting, we're waiting, because we gotta go in front of the judge.
Okay, I see, I know what you're saying, yeah, so that's how it would, when you pass it.
Can I make a suggestion that, make a note in our minutes?
Yes.
That we're requesting information on this uh, changeover and people being involved, and we also need to know if the chamber's gonna be playing a part in this, you know, we all donate things from different places, Perryville gives us a police car once in a while, chamber helps us out with fire, something here or else, probably wanna know. Who's involved?
Perryville doesn't want anything in turn.
Yeah.
They, they have just good faith. I mean, I do business down there, and their chamber's good, this wasn't chamber, no problem, nothing, so.
At our next meeting, can we have on our um, agenda, a request for information? Not from that, see what you get first.
She wouldn't give that. I got a meeting with the twenty, I think it's the twenty-second.
Just let me know if the board, the mayor, and the alderman are requesting the, I don't want you to cull that document, but it's the one that ties it all together.
Instead arbitration, everything, best, law and rights, legal stuff. So, I'm sure they have a long way to go, because that's a lot of departmental.
Yeah, and they must have some type of outline or, they've been working on way before we got to this point.
Yeah. Yeah. So, okay, anything else, Frankie, on the fire department side?
Uh, right now, uh, have to replace the, what motor on eighty one, which uh, will be coming in tomorrow. Eighty one hour, you know, very end.
Everything else are good?
Yep, everything else is.
Alright. Alright. Alright, police department. Doc, you, you wanna give?
Yeah, a report from Officer Tann.
Yeah, so for March, I had seventy five total calls. Uh, yeah, um. One thing is, a lot of those are like speeding tickets and whatnot, uh, been cracking down on that again, like always. One thing I want to bring up, animals at large, I know there's been a lot of complaints about those. And there's only so many times I can issue tickets or take the animals to, you know, county town and then, but they just pay the fine, they're, they're back out again. Uh, I know down at the water plant, there's the uh, those old kennels, cages down there.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we'd be able to maybe clean those up and I could just take animals there and maybe. Uh, citizens pay like a boarding fee or something to get their animals back or anything like that, because I know it's been, it's been an issue.
I think we've tried that once before, we just thought, keep the animals, because then this sound becomes the city's property, you know, that we gotta deal with getting into those animals. Because they can, most of them just don't care, they care unless they got there to go back.
I would check with the animal control officer, St. Jen's, the county one. Uh, because there are other issues that are related to that too, like once you bring them, uh, you, you know, put them in our system, then you have to feed. Uh, feed water, water needs to be changed daily, so now that's another, that's almost a full-time job, you have to clean excrement in a kennel. You have, there's health issues, if there are parasites, you know, then, then you have to worry about parasite control, like, you know, one animal has worms or something, it defecates, you know, in the kennel. Then it goes back home, you put another one in there and then it eats the turds or whatever, the dog that was in there, which happens all the time. And then that animal gets it, and then now you have a vet bill and, you know, so it gets pretty complicated, you know, at that point. You're better off, you know, like tying a badge of shame to your dog's collar or something. Saying that, you know, residents aren't irresponsible, uh, and, you know, let the dog run back home, uh, if you can, you know, catch it or smear or whatever. And that's the thing, tonight I got chewed in the, in the police department, got hashed online. But I've asked that person if they, they want to complain, the police filed complaint because allegedly killed their chickens or whatever. Well, it's a coon dog, it's gonna probably do that, but the fact of the matter is, if there's an issue, call him or call animal. You know?
Yeah.
We can't do nothing without, and that, and then I tell them that and they don't want to do it. Other than that, I mean, there's a place in Cape I can call, you know, and if everybody wants to complain that the animal cruelty and the rescue. That ships them out of state, any animal with no tag, they'll go around and check every tag, and if they don't have a tag, it's getting shipped. If they spay, neuter, was trapped, spay, neuter and release or rehome, so. It can end up Pennsylvania, ain't my problem, you know, people should have tags on their stuff, and if like, this, he should be getting bashed. Because he can't work twenty-four seven chasing chicken killers. So.
So if it's a tawalla, they're gonna be ported back to Mexico.
Yes, yes, so, yeah.
This guy is so tough, he's gonna say, just kill him.
I just think I always come up with seals.
Just shoot him, okay, Jesus.
Yeah, so I mean, I do catching these dogs and then I take them up there, and the next day they're back out again, running around and, and catch them again. Next day they're back out again, so it's like a never ending.
Well, seriously, you catch them, right? You put them in the.
Yeah, put them in the backseat there.
So you should get some, seriously, put some kind of tag on their.
Yeah.
So that, it's, it's costing time for you to drive up there, it's costing fuel. And then the dogs are right back, you might as well just catch them and stick a thing on their collar saying, you know.
Right.
Trouble maker or something.
Is it the same three dogs, because the three dogs that run around this town, very, it's like boys that just skip school, you know? I see them come running across by her and say, hey, boy, you can eat like. I think you can get back where you did, you're like, oh boy, but they're good dogs, and I don't know, I mean, they, they have collars on. And they're not really, we don't know what kind of damage they're doing to the little sharks or chickens or anything like that. But uh, they seem to be healthy, but I see the, the three dogs, which I heard about it does, and, you know what I'm talking?
Those are probably community players usually.
Yeah, yeah, coon dogs, it's killing chickens. It's, it's, it's our town mascot Buster.
Yeah.
It's hard to do.
Yeah, so Buster was bad today, and so, yeah, that's the issue. Yeah, but also you have your little chickens that, you know, you're not supposed to have, or cows or whatever you got. Get it, I mean, put them up, my family chicken for thirty years, didn't have any.
Well, actually, I looked into legality of that, it is legal in the city to have chickens.
Yes, these can roosters.
Right, and uh, there are, you know, the prior administration thought that you couldn't have it because they didn't want people to have it. And they cited an ordinance, which is really, that doesn't apply to, uh, poultry.
No, no, and you are correct on that, so people can have chickens, there's a limit, but it had laying cans, right, homely?
Yeah.
Yeah, no roosters, but Buster was bad and got in some nice chickens, and so they are upset, so.
Most cities have, you know, a, a head count of like not more than five, but three to five. Dead chickens? Well, you can have all the dead chickens you want.
But Buster is also protected by V H stuff too, and Buster is protected, so anybody shoots Buster. It's gonna cause more than chickens.
Yeah.
I'll do some telling you, because that's their support animal, once they're like, he follows them back, like the actual, he does.
He sleeps in one of the residents' rooms.
Does he?
Uh, yes, he does, and, and he does follow the gentleman around town, but Buster, um. Eats cheese right out of the refrigerator, he sleeps in some of the residents' beds, you know, they, they adore him.
They're massive, they're good, they're good dogs, they really are.
The, the two little girls that followed him around, um, they're not quite as friendly as Buster, but I don't know if I can mention names.
We already know.
Okay, so, um, sister Frances knows that she can't keep the dogs in the fence. And because she's called up there before and, you know, honey, let me know if my dogs are up there and, um, we. Well, I shouldn't say we anymore, but staff would take the girls back home and. Sister Frances seems to think it's when Buster run, they see Buster, they're busting out, so they, she thinks that's the problem, but, um.
So, yeah, so Buster is bad today, so we gotta deal with Buster somehow, I guess. But alright, anything else?
Um, yeah, uh, I was made aware today, I had, some people asked me about a lot of police presence on Cemetery Road. I, I had no idea, nothing, nothing's passed out to me, um, apparently the county made a fugitive arrest. Uh, on Cemetery Road, and I feel like, um, I should be made aware of this thing.
You should be.
I, Doc has sent you an email also, you as well. Um, I tagged you in it, uh, sent it to the sheriff himself and the patrol sergeant and also the chief deputy. Pretty much asking, hey, you know, what's going on, you need to know, citizens are asking me what's, what's happening, um, it's kind of also like public safety concern. We have a fugitive here, I had no idea about it, didn't receive a phone call or anything, so I sent that email out.
Do you need to help us to follow up on that?
Uh, yeah, remember, I have the back came on, it's like commissioners and social services. Some of these are deputies are trying to boss him around, they need to figure out. Yes, they are deputies and they work together, but he's still chief of police. And this is a jurisdiction, they do not need to overstep and, and then boss him around. He doesn't need to ask permission from them to do his job, he's got the same license. So we need to get on the same page with the sheriff, because if they're doing no knock warrants in this town. Especially with a fugitive like that, if I think of who it is, then that's not good.
It doesn't look good on me either, because I got people asking me, no, I didn't know anything about it, and I'm a cop here, it doesn't look bad.
And also the officer of safety, you know, with him, I sat checking the, I've heard it, I've reported, called him, you know, I don't understand, I've had a great relationship with Gary. And them, and never had a problem, but they're, we need to try and get to this a little bit deeper with them, because he gets caught up.
I would text you, so you know, because I don't, uh, generally, uh.
Okay, yeah, just see, see you with him, email to the sheriff.
Um, yeah, and the thing is, they're not, when they're in town. They're not like, you know, you know, sending him reports, what's going on, so say there's a domestic and they have a twelve hour. Well, he goes on duty, he don't know what's going on, because they were there during the night, well, they had twelve hours. He clicks on it, says no information, like it's some secretive CIA thing.
They don't share their, um, candidates with me, so, and even if like they have a call here and like a deputy's attached to it. I can see some of it, but I can't see all the information, I can only see like where the call was, I don't have any other notes or anything like that.
This is common courtesy, I think, between professionals.
Yeah.
It is common, it's professional courtesy and, you know, and Corbett is not here no more, and they need to get that through his head. But, and also, did you get the same complaints to me as an impersonator?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And where is that impersonator operating?
Uh, so, I seen.
Kind of vehicle, sort of.
Yeah, I seen, um, it in town, I was off duty at the time, at the gas station, um, it's an older, like model Crown Victoria, like I have. Slipped out, uh, it has dash lights in it, it looks like it has a radar mount, uh, computer, everything, it looks like a legit police car, you know, regular citizen won't know. Uh, and then I, uh, was confronted by a conservation, Illinois Conservation Officer was going to the island. And he said that they've had reports from over there of this vehicle actually pulling people over and pretty much. Identifying himself as law enforcement when he's not, um, so.
Their tag number or anything?
Yeah, I do have it, I might have to look at the notes again and see, uh, but I passed that along to Randolph County Sheriff over on the island and also Perry County. And, uh, Illinois State Conservation and.
What, what color is your car?
Uh, silver.
Silver, you have a fake tag or? I think you see off there's Marshall's car.
Yeah, it's, it comes back to just a regular person, it's in Missouri, regular Missouri plate, it's not like that city police plate like I have. Uh, it just comes back to regular citizens, so, I don't know if they're just playing cop or what, but that's, that's also concerning.
So if they, since they have an address, and, and I guess, like they visit him or?
I think Perry County may have, I'm not a hundred percent sure though, I got a call probably a week ago about it. Um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure it's that they went over there or not, I know Randolph County was wanting to because it had been in their jurisdiction pretty much.
So is there a way that we can keep our citizens aware of and keep them, you know?
I mean, he's got identification and he proves, I mean, we can, he's got a webpage, I can put it out too.
Yeah.
I mean, they can always call dispatch, because the cars have GPS on, they'll say exactly where you're at, if there's actually.
Yeah, my, my advice would be, if you're getting pulled over by someone and they have lights flashing behind you and you don't feel comfortable. My advice, you can always, you can actually call dispatch or nine one one and let them know and they, they will tell you if it's me or a county unit or state control or something like that. Uh, so I would definitely recommend doing.
And I guess just coming from hearing stories from that before, like on, uh, New Orleans a little ways, uh, St. Jen's County, a lot of that. Um, you know, people were getting pulled over by these people and that's the first thing you think, I mean, you know, when you see the, the police officer behind you and have eyes. Your first instinct, pull over, do all those things that you're supposed to be doing, and that's why I get a little concerned as far as if it's happening in a town like this. We have people that, they're gonna do the same thing.
Yeah.
So is there a way that we can let others, you know, our citizens know that this is going on?
Yeah, to a point, unless it's ongoing investigation, I mean. We still, I mean, that's why he got full commission by the sheriff and gave, and the sheriff gave him arrest rights over there on the island, they didn't need to, until they get there. Because there's been other people over there, I mean, there's been reports of blue lights, red, there's been red and. Only, I mean, it's just stupid.
Is that imposter armed?
I'm not sure, um, that's concerning as well, because we don't know exactly who this person is, um.
Yeah.
So, I mean, anything could happen, I mean.
So best thing is call dispatch and verify it, and, or eight eight three fifty two fifteen, go straight to a dispatcher that can say, see us on the screen. See the cars on the screen, so, and it'll tell you exactly, and if it's not, they'll dispatch the closest car, whether it's him or whoever to you.
And, uh, just, just out of curiosity, does nine one one work? I mean, do you, like in Cape, I remember, uh, calling nine one one a couple of times and I would get a recording.
Yeah.
All the police.
Yeah, nine one one does work, it's the St. Francis Joint Communication Center, so everything goes to them, sometimes it'll bounce off the Randolph County towers, but then they'll transfer it over.
Or they can repeat it to the radio, to them, if they talk, and just like he can talk to Randolph County, when he goes over there, he lets them know he's over there.
Okay.
You know, patrol and forum, because they ask them to go over there, whatever, or not.
I go over there.
Yeah, great, alright, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, alright, uh, park and cemetery. Rose, you got anything?
No, I have nothing, sorry.
Alright, um, I know Eric and Joey spent, I don't know how many dump truck loads, cutting all those tree limbs and trees up. And took them down, cleaned that old rig yard up, and, uh, what else did you guys do? Did they mow it? You guys mowed?
Mowed it, mediated it, had it all cleaned up looking nice.
Blow off the head sounds good, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, what'd you do down at the park today? We got that too.
Um, down at the park, you guys had the snack shack in the back by the ball field. We had noticed the other day when we were mowing, that somebody had been staying in there. And it is not safe, it is not, was not a safe structure for anybody to be in, so therefore we took the structure down safely. To where nobody can get in there anymore, it is being completely torn flat, so.
I gave them authorization, I didn't get a chance a year ago to take that out, so they've been staying in there and caught and just, but I mean, it's.
Go, go, Ken.
Yeah, okay. Um, the door on the cemetery will be replaced on the, uh, Buster, I don't know. St. Buster, the door on the, uh, caretaker shack, somebody kicked it off the hinges or something, so we gotta replace it or figure out how to do that, but I'm gonna.
That's another place that someone can't pop, yeah? That's a cool little place.
They're not having trolls over there too.
Uh, street department, Doc?
Uh, not that much has changed that I know of, uh, other than I know rock's gonna be delivered to finish off the last patch from Mary Cliff.
It's without a water tower. Did you guys do that down there?
Yes, there is three piles over there that need to be sprayed.
Awesome.
So we got that down there.
That's good, alright, Frankie, anything you have?
Well, except for down here at Third Street, uh, up, uh, right there by Spruce, we need, um, I guess figure out if we can find a culvert. Or something, because all the spring water coming out of the hills, going across the road, maybe it looks like we got a war league at the outer down there. But there is a culvert there, I do know there is one there, but it's silted in.
And then on, uh, Fourth Street by Sycamore, there's across from Ron's houses, but I mean, that. There's a gully that's starting to develop there on my property, and it bottom, I guess there's a. Coming downhill, the water rushes down there and it used to jump the road and get onto Ronnie's ground, and now it dug it out a little bit, but it's getting deeper there. And downward hits Sycamore, you told me years ago that there's a culvert that goes under.
It's over, go down there, but it's collapsed.
Collapsed, alright, because the water is like a right turn, like a hard right turn to go down that other thing, so is it popping over the road there? Or do you, do you go around there to see it?
No, it's popping everywhere. No, it's popping everywhere. I've never, I've never treaded in so much water on sixty one in my life and except when it flooded, actually flooded, um, with the river coming up. But, um, the roads down here, uh, it's pretty bad too, so.
You guys, you and Joey, did you guys done have culverts on certain streets as well?
Uh, yes, on, yeah, I think it was, I think it was, it was Fifth Street. Um, we cleaned out there, we cleaned out a bunch of trash out of the culvert top here in front of Third, Third Street and all that, because we saw it there, we saw it blocked. We opened it up while it was raining, while the water was coming through, to make it flow a little bit here.
And if you notice any areas that, that as a result of these rains were, uh, stuff has been ruined, like I noticed cemetery road since I walked there on the west, uh, southwest side of the road, the, uh, the road started to get undercut near the edges.
Yes.
Uh, where, so if there's any other areas that you spot, like if you file a report to the mayor, because I think we might get.
Yeah.
Get off the reimbursement.
I had a call from Jeff City, um, First Freedom Money, so like the plant, like the plant ain't jacked up. Actually, the, the EV room is, we got bulbs out because that last time it flooded, so. He's at three.
Yeah, it's running.
Well, I know, but he's coming back to fix it, but.
I know, I'm just saying.
Okay, he'll look. So, but anything like structurally, the plant or the bench shaft or anything like that?
Or expense from repairing, might get time when it floods.
Yeah, and then like their labor expense and like you let anybody, so I submit that to them and then they've seen a reimbursement, or through CNA, that's fee my money, you know, for that. So if you guys see any damage to things, just let me know, write down. I just gotta let them know what it is and we qualify because, well, our plant's like.
The creek behind the sewer plant took out a big portion of that, uh, bank to, backs out the things right there.
There's other, oh, okay, alright. So I'll let them know that because, and he said, I don't know how much it is. They don't know. I just let them know and then they expedite it because our plant's so old and just to make sure, so. But, uh, as soon as I know from you guys, I'll just send, uh, they said send, and then I'll give, uh, send it's money or whatever. I just gotta know your hours and stuff, which I'll be able to ask for hours and everything, so.
And the other thing, it's like looking at the monthly budget report, both for street and sewer. Uh, what, I mean, we're six months into our budget and for street and sewer, we're at, this is percentage used of the budget, we're at seventy two percent and sewer is a hundred and six percent, so we're.
The hun, the sewer?
Yeah.
That's from the Marion Cliff issue?
Oh, okay. So has that been balanced out since?
That's gonna get, that's gonna get balanced out totally. We're gonna balance that out. And the water, actually, what was it, the water we were having?
No, it's not the water.
No, okay, sewer we were having on. On the one, but I see the balance he gets. That's what knocked it off, but so we did these reconciles.
Yeah.
But when he redoes these reconciles, since the money, the money was changed, now the money's back in and then all that, it'll change to where we're not at that percentage.
So at the next meeting, then, uh, we'll see a correction in these percentage disbursements, right?
Probably not, because we just received March, our bank statements come out at the beginning of the month, so when he comes to reconcile on the seventeenth, he'll be reconciling for March.
Oh.
So.
Yeah.
Um, potentially committing on how, how it falls in the, in the bank statements, if it will, it will show a change. It may be the next time.
Oh, so this would be, because this has February twenty twenty five for the monthly budget report.
Yeah.
So, it would actually be worse than, right?
Right.
Because we are at sixty percent use, the total is not all, and, uh, and that's not including, we get tech on another two months.
If he hasn't reconciled for March yet, he's reconciling for March on the seventeenth.
Okay, and they're sort of highest expenses and utilization are administrative budget.
Yeah.
And street and sewer.
The reason street is, is they did it, remember we didn't, they did repair. Yeah, we'll just have to do it in the paving, remember we've been writing checks, so we have to, um, budget pass.
Right.
That's why it's worth that.
Okay.
That'll drop down, once we've ended it and add that money into that, it'd be correct. And then if I need to reconcile, once we get that on the sewer side, because right here, that six thousand is pretty much miss pack news bill and everything else altogether. I mean, it just causes a lot.
Okay.
Same waters, how water?
Water, if she would have paid the full amount, we would break even on water at this time.
Okay.
So.
That, we just got a billing cycle, so we'll be paying collections in around, so.
Well, our billing, well, well, we're taking in for March right now. The tenth was our cutoff yesterday and then the twenty first will be in late.
The margin, margin's really tight on that.
Oh, read meters again around the eighteen percent.
Um, okay, yeah, we'll just, we'll go through that, I mean. And then, oh, and another thing through it all, the sewer, Doc, Michael told me from apartment engineering, we didn't take into account that we were gonna get that grant for sixty five thousand or fifty thousand. That didn't help either because that wasn't budgeted in, so that's why it's worth that. So we need that money, right?
Yeah.
He does the work, we write the check out of sewer and then they pay us back that money, but we never, we didn't know we were gonna get that grant. He's been trying to get that grant for years.
So there'll be a correction, they'll request that.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I asked Michael, I'm like, what is going on? Like, why is our group not making money no more? Like, it obviously made money and, yeah, so that's what it is.
Okay.
Alright. Anybody else on that, alright? All the men helms, um, I guess economic development not really administrated anymore.
Well, the thing about administrative is I had an opportunity to work with, uh, the final hire of our new clerk, which we're really mighty glad to have, Jessica, and, uh, come through, and Kathy also, all of them had the, uh, management help. And we went through the process of interviewing, uh, quite a few applicants and, uh, the one that we chose we felt was the best for the position and, uh, both for the city and for the, uh, residents of the city. And so we're really pleased to make that hire. And, and then working with Kathy on that, uh, we did, uh, wanna remind everybody that we had, uh, April in as a clerk for almost three years. I mean, it's a collector and clerk. But, um, I think pretty good transition out, uh, from April. We gave her a little going away party here and, uh, let her know that we appreciated her time. But, um, so we're, we're hitting really the end of the second week that you've been on board. It already, the office looks so much better, so organized, and I know there's not two people in there doing all that stuff, but, um, wanna wish you good luck and, uh, and we'll give you a board, so as far as that goes. And I can certainly help you do anything you need, any help with administrative, you know, anytime we have to stuff envelopes or do any letters or things like that. So, uh, I won't be walking away from that position. Economic Development worked with, uh, Rose, uh, and with Kathy on, uh, putting together our mission statement.
Yeah.
We had a pretty exciting meeting and, uh, I wish we would have had our statement with us, I had it right with me. But, um, we had a good time putting that together. We're forming an organization that's gonna be for the development of our community as far as developing family oriented things to do in the city. Uh, this year we may only be able to get one on our calendar, but we're working on an annual calendar, things that can be done in spring, summer and fall. Uh, and which would include an Easter egg hunt, something to do at Christmas time, a fall harvest type of festival. And probably by this, this September, October, we'll have some type of event planned for the city of Saint Mary and for all the residents of Saint Mary. But not only will we be involved as a city, but we're hoping to get our churches involved and other organizations that love Saint Mary and wanna see something successful. Uh, so we're just in the beginning. We're, we're actually gonna have our next meeting next week and after that, we're gonna be planning monthly meetings. And you'll hear more about it on the board, uh, a report to the board about that organization. But Kathy has, uh, been voted to be the president of the group and, uh, Rose is, is, uh, treasurer and I'm secretary. So, we're looking to look for some membership, uh, on the board from citizens here in Saint Mary after we get formed.
That's okay, yeah.
So that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Hopefully, yeah, with the mission statement, and I guess you guys showed his name and you'll be.
Yes, that'll all be at our next meeting.
I didn't know where to put it, I'm just.
That's good, with, with Kathy not being here because that's her report really.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, because we, you didn't know we made a president, she has it, so we'll wait for the next meeting, we'll have her give a report, okay?
Okay, alright. Um, also, yeah, another thing I was gonna say, back in the day, real quick, when I was a kid, the fire department, when we had fireworks to keep people from shooting them off in town, the fire department would go down the park and we would let that people and oversee that, let people shoot off fireworks till eleven o'clock and cut it off and let them go. Let them shoot their little hearts out.
That's a good idea.
And I meant, when even I was a cop, I told Carl, I'm like, hey, we did that when Gary Armbruster was here and everybody else. The fire department's there, well, they're gonna burn down. There's nothing down there to burn down, you know, and it, there's always.
Hobo camp.
Huh?
The hobo camp.
But I, you know, it, it's just kinda tradition thinking, just like the sledding, you know, it's like, I remember as a kid, they used to do that and just in case the fire department was there, if anything happened and it was just a hit together, but it took everybody from, burning everybody's house down and down. And go down there and just have fun and do that, be careful, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know what you think, but I mean, that's just what they.
Our organization would be the groups that go to about that.
Yeah.
And we, like I said, we're working on a calendar. We take the Fourth of July, it might be too soon for us to really get something organized, so we're really looking, I mean, it could be sooner, but we're really looking at the fall so we can plan something that has everything involved, you know, uh, that a, not a street dance or street party, we're talking about a, a day event that might have, you know, uh, a petting zoo for kids and uh, other things that go along with, uh, food and, uh, uh, stuff that, like a large picnic for the town, so.
Well, you liked the idea though.
Yeah.
And I think that even with it just being the Fourth of July, it's come up, I mean, you can still get worse.
Hot dogs.
You know, everybody bring what your fireworks be, well, I fireworks frame down, let's all shoot them off down here, you know?
Yeah, and it's controlled.
I've never thought about that because it's been so not done.
Right.
Yeah, and it's been shot down for years and when I was a, when I was here as a public, and I, oh, I would, I would never ask that again. Because that was the worst thing, but I was like, it, it was controlled. And Joey probably remembers when they done that. So I mean, it's just, I think it's good for them.
It might be a start.
I think it might be a Fourth of July picnic type of thing. Start on the day, but I'm gonna let it get darkened and have the fireworks, you know, have a big afternoon. Everybody kind of barbecue, do what they wanted to do and then have a fireworks thing, yeah.
I mean, the benches are still down there, we're still painting electric down there and everything.
This is the first I've thought about it since you brought it up, because it's been so like illegal.
Yeah, because they made it illegal to guard it, but really, if you think about it, you have the fire department there and everything. Yeah.
People can shoot to. Well, okay, but we'll talk about that at our next meeting.
It's something, but I've been, I've been wanting to, and then I brought it up and I just show, shit, huh?
Well, that's a, we'll look at that for you.
It's okay, it's been dropped before. Alright, um, anything else, Mr. Helm?
That's fair, that's my report, can you do it?
Uh, emergency management, I've been doing that, Frank, well, Frank's been doing this thing too. I said, just watching the water. Um, Joey's been helping watching the storm, so has Chief Bourbon. So it's other than talking to Hank and then, and then up there with the FEMA and the FEMA money.
Is there a question about the tornado alarm?
Um.
Yeah.
So, they go by polies. Where's my poly book?
Do you want, you wanna start off, tell them what, why it was?
So anyways, it used to be, you call them in, I was behind him, down by Chris Ponders and tree from Terry Winston and falling down the hill. I stopped because I know a visionary one, I'm not gonna drive through another, so I backed up, he drove through it. And anyways, so what happened was I hadn't called dispatch to turn the sirens on, because Randolph County picked up the activation. Right there, well, leave it to Noah, it's all this internet, this is what I get from Alan Wells and this, you know, and Chucky. But I love those guys, they're good guys, you know, but there's a polygram and so there are little polygrams. It's somewhere, it's a book, safety plan, wherever it may be, but the safety plan's got little polygrams on it, so if you don't meet the criteria, so many polygrams, they won't turn the siren on. Because allegedly that siren can't be set off by yourself, which you can. We have our own siren up there, if there are any, it won't fire them off. That thing's loud, it's all get out, but we had dispatch, won't do it anymore. Back when I was on, they allowed it. Now they don't.
Joey, any info on that?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you. The last I knew, the last I knew is, yeah, they, they could set it off, there was a criteria. I don't remember what was it, three mile or five mile, but they did, that didn't, the same area, took the warning, they set the sirens off. This particular night, Perry, this part of Perry County was under warning.
It was Aetro.
Yes, that's, in Aetro, they actually had one, a tornado was about six miles southeast or, or whatever, Saint Mary. That's when we tried to get the sirens set off, we're like, no.
Yeah, they, they told us.
And I don't got the weatherman, you know.
I'm sorry to speak.
Yeah, they said, so basically, when I talked to dispatch, they said, sanctioned county as a whole wasn't really affected. And I'm like, it doesn't really matter because we're, we were pretty much in a passage and shit built.
We're right on the border, we were essentially, we're gonna lie off this.
Yeah, Perry County was under warning and so was Randolph County, which they're right there.
If it's on the edge of city limits, then I would advise setting, I mean, what's the harm?
Yeah.
Heather led me and jumped over.
People, you know, called, uh, called.
I had my weatherman on.
Time to call.
I can understand, that's what we told them. And the weatherman, I told him the same thing.
Yes, when people do adhere to that.
Oh, so it wasn't warm.
Yeah.
Otherwise it's the fire and ride wolf.
Exactly, but I, I think you, me, Adam, you get the feelings of Alan. And Alan Wells is over in the, we need, we need to make some changes to that. Because that's, see, the way it's set up now, the way I understand, if they got a tornado warning that just scrapes the very north, north of Bloomsdale, our sirens will go off, which is ridiculous. Okay, you can't, it, it, it should be specific, you know, where, if you ever look at a map, it'll show where the warning is, okay? It'll have the northern end of the county, why are our sirens going off?
Yeah.
You know, so that's totally wrong way, in my opinion, totally wrong way.
Yeah, they got me kinda snippy with me whenever I asked them and I'm like, well, it's literally coming our direction. They even said, oh yeah, it is coming your direction, but it doesn't meet the criteria because I guess the whole county and the whole wasn't affected by it, but right there on Aetro, it's heading towards that.
So I would advise reaching out to them and, uh, request a clarification of their policies. Uh, when in an instance that we just experienced where the tornado was on our doorsteps. And although it may have affected someone on Mr. Helm's property up at the top of the hill, but down here lower.
Right.
I mean, yet the development behind the, the newer development.
Yeah.
Was closer to it than someplace on the north side of town.
Yeah.
So, uh, I would request that we contact. So, uh, I would request that we contact them, have a clarification in a situation like that where part of the city's affected and not the others.
Well, I, I was gonna go in the patrol car and hit the sirens and go over the loudspeaker, but I didn't think anybody would've been able to hear me.
They did, mine, mine did in the car, but the thing about it is, we have a perfectly good air raid siren up there.
Where is the siren?
Ancient long, that old one, they used to do it in noon every day.
Yeah.
So you can hear the burr. And that's ours.
And now, if, if you decide to move that, you know, set up something to trigger that by radio.
Yeah, all the time, right?
Yeah.
So.
Cause I had that before, DTM that time.
Cause I, I said, I called dispatch and I called Neve Chuck, which is assistant to administrator of nine-one-one. He called me and explained it to me, how this map, whatever. But there should be a way to receive rotation, trees spinning and falling in front of us. And then Randall County's picking it up. The weatherman says there's a tornado warning for Saint Mary's. And this is what happened the last time, twenty-one, and I drove in and had that, you know, and because it waited too long.
Right.
I was going around my siren because the sirens weren't on, warning people.
All right, so anyway, I would, uh, I guess we need to review that, get clarification on it and then implement, uh, new policies if necessary. The police and fire department are, uh, required to, uh, turn your own sirens or PA system on. To, uh, let people in the immediate vicinity, you know, without putting yourself in harm's way.
If, if nothing else, give, you know, him and I the capability to set this siren off. Cause it's set off with my telephone, oh.
Yeah, and they can set our own off, cause we have, if we have our own project, the one we can. They just don't want everybody thinking, oh, cause they used to do thunderstorm and they used to do it twice, you remember how that used to be?
Yeah.
But then they're like, oh, they just got people too comfortable. But you know they'll hear that one. And you guys can figure that out.
Does that one go off, did it go off?
No, it's not hooked up, it's a three phase, but you've been put a repeater and where it's triggered.
Just a record, I had, the way I had it set up before, I had the whole radio on, I don't need that, just happened to be on our fire ground frequency for the fire department. Which very challenging, it's huge. So I had it set up and I made a little box that would decode the touch tone.
Uh huh.
It's a little switch and then that would, you know.
Right.
Set it off, so I'd sit there with my mind, dee, 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 dee. That's how we set it off.
Right, well, I mean, for the good of the community, you know, and events of a, a hazardous event. Then I think we should probably implement that.
It's just, it's on Bobby Fisher's ground, so I need to call Bobby.
Not what, X come.
I'll see what he says and that, I mean, he said we can have, it's ours, but I mean, it's just where we put it and, and on top of it. To be honest, it's probably with the direction, so.
So does it not work at all? I mean, it's.
It's been sitting there, it's been sitting idle since twenty-one, since tornadoes took out and they unducted it from the power. But the city's been paying insurance on it till last year or this year, or like when it took off, they're paying insurance on it, on that thing. Which, why, I don't know. But, cause that's how I figured it out, it was ours, I'm like, oh, that's nice, that's ours, but I didn't know, I'm like, we can reuse it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we could put a joyous crack here.
So you can hear it?
Oh, you're early here. All right, uh, citizen participation. Anybody, Joey, anything, anybody do, all right? Uh, is there a motion to adjourn to closing? Motion made, is there a second?
One second.
Second made by Alden Rosenway, motions on favor.
All right.
All right, any votes? All right, we have adjourned to closing.